These short meetings in front of us tonight. The first one is the Industrial Development Authority regular meeting for January 23rd, and I'd like to call that to order, and I'd ask Ms. Madeline if she'd please call the roll.
Director Santangelo. Director Mulchay.
Present.
Vice Chair Tremblay.
Present.
Chair Kilde.
Here. And we do have an excused absence, absence, Councilmember Craven is at another meeting, and she should be here as time permits. So, flag salute. Santangelo, would you please lead us in a flag?
Hand over heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Chair Kilde.
Public comments for the Industrial Development Authority, seeing no one come forward, we'll go down to item three. It's just a consent calendar item?
We consent.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to abstain from this considering that I was not on the, I was not present for that meeting.
On the minutes alone.
On the minutes alone.
On the minutes alone, right?
Yes, okay, for sure.
Well, that raises the question of whether Susan Santangelo should also abstain, and then that raises the issue of now you've only got two councilmembers that can vote, and we have four here, so two isn't a majority of four. Is Councilmember Craven coming back?
She is.
Yes, we anticipate her coming back, but it'll be much later.
Well, this problem that we've just identified with the approval of the minutes due to the lack of attendance at the meeting, what we could do is hold on these meetings for now and return to them after Councilmember Craven joins us, and then you would have a majority to approve the minutes.
Okay, do you want to take care of that business at the start of the second part of the agenda when Ms. Craven returns, or should we wait till the very end and do it?
Well...
I mean, they don't take very long.
It's got them on the agenda for 5:00. So, my, what time do we expect Councilmember Craven to arrive?
It's undetermined at this time.
Okay. Well, what we could do is start with, is the CSD our next meeting after these other meetings?
Yes.
What we could do is move on to the CSD and get started on that. We could do the successor agency and then go to the council meeting, and then when Councilmember Craven arrives, we could return to those meetings where we would need her vote to give us a majority.
Mayor, I note that on the CSD, the only thing on the consent calendar is, again, the minutes. We're going to run into the same problem.
No, no.
No? What else do we have?
We might want to...
Oh, yes, okay, that's fine.
So, we could go to the CSD, then successor, then council, and then if Ms. Craven returns in time, we'll go to those other agencies that only meet once a year.
Okay, so let me do this. Why don't I recess this meeting, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Mulchay, and we'll get to deal with the sand issues. Proceed, if you would.
Thank you. Here I order the meeting in the Camrio Sanitary District. Let the record show that all board members are present except Mrs. Craven. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Chair.
And are there any public comments? Seeing there are no public comments, we're going to move to the consent calendar.
Move consent.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, please vote. It passes with four, with Mrs. Craven absent. We have no departmental items, we have no legal items. Any comments from staff? No comments from staff, comments from board members? All right, and I will hereby adjourn the meeting in the Camrio Sanitary District and City Council, Camrio Sanitary District to February 6th, 2019, at 5:30 at the Camrio Public Library Community Room for the goal-setting meeting.
With that, I will open the Camrio Successor Agency meeting for January 23rd, and let the record reflect that all councilmembers with one excused absence are present. Amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Mayor.
Okay, we'll get down to public comments on the Camrio Successor Agency. Seeing no one come forward, we'll get down to the consent calendar on this particular item.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes 401 with one excused absence. Okay, so that gets us down to comments from staff?
No comments.
Comments from board members? Any comments from board members? Hearing none? So with this, we will adjourn this meeting. All right, so that gets us to opening the regular Camrio City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 23rd, and let the record reflect that all councilmembers are present with the exception of one, which is an excused absence. Hopefully she'll be here within not too, too long of a time. Amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Mayor.
Okay, we do not have any presentations, however, we do have the consent calendar. I do have an individual here tonight that would like to, just to be here if we have any questions for consent item E. So if anybody has any questions on that, I do have an individual, Mr. Darren Perrin, who's here tonight to answer any questions, if anybody has any. I, Mr. Mulchay, would you like to come up, Darren?
No, 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 sorry, I don't have any questions for Darren.
Oh, you don't?
Not on this, I have questions on two other items.
Okay. All right, so that, which items are those, Mr. Mulchay?
I have questions on item J and item M.
Okay, item J and item M, can we take them now? Would you like to put them?
Yeah, yeah.
Just questions?
Quick questions.
Okay, why don't we go on item J first, then, please?
Item J, the Santa Rosa Road Parkway improvements, we are going to use drought-tolerant plants for that, those improvements, is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, low water use, matching the existing plant palette that's out there in the Santa Rosa corridor.
And there will be no trees involved in that improvement?
That's correct. No new trees planted, be planted.
Okay. That's all I have for item J.
Item, item M?
Item M, in regarding to the vehicle lift replacement, I'm just curious, is it, it's very uncommon, I presume, that, once we award a contract, that the vendor, who's been awarded the contract, is essentially non-responsive?
Yes, that's correct. It's quite shocking, actually, and we're quite taken aback by it, but we're ready to move on.
Excellent. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
I should add that it's my understanding that the Clausen Automotive Equipment that had received the award had not responded to the city's requests to execute the contract, and also that the city staff did notify Clausen that this item was going to be on the agenda tonight for the rescission of that award, so they're aware of it, and do we ever get a response to that? Okay.
Mr. Tremblay.
Did we have a bid bond on that proposal?
No, there was no bid bond on that proposal.
So there's no bond we can move against for failure to file the approved contract documents, because now we have to go to the next lowest bidder, so we're actually going to be paying more money.
That's correct.
But we do not have a... Is there a threshold estimate, I'm sorry, how much does a project have to be, or how much, in staff's view, does a project have to be bid at before a bid bond is required?
I might be able to answer that one unless somebody else has got an answer. My understanding is, under the Public Contracts Code, that a bid bond is required in the event of a public works project. This is a vehicle purchase, and I'm not aware of anything in our purchasing policy that requires a bid bond regardless of the amount.
Okay.
Correction, this is not a vehicle purchase, this is a vehicle lift purchase.
Well, yes, I stand corrected.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. Yeah, well, it's, this is a very unusual situation, so I don't think it's going to be replicated. Thanks for letting me ask a question.
Okay, are there any other questions on the consent? What's the will of the council?
Move all of the consent items.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further thoughts? Please vote. That passes 401 with one excused absence. Okay, so that gets us down to, yeah, I guess we're down to new business now. Okay, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to share tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to call up our community relations officer who has an announcement.
Welcome, let me make sure that the microphone is on. Here we go.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Kilde and councilmembers. I'm here this evening to formally invite the public to participate in the upcoming community workshop for the redevelopment of the former courthouse property in Old Town. The workshop will be held this coming Tuesday, January 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Camrio Library. This will be the first in a series of workshops that will engage the public in the redevelopment of this property that is located in the heart of Camrio's Old Town. For those who cannot attend the workshop next week but would like to share their ideas, we invite you to visit our city's website. On our homepage, there's a link to the former courthouse redevelopment project that includes an online comment form. All comments are welcome and will be considered by the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That brings up a question, I think it's a legal question, Counselor. If a majority of the city council wants to be there, will we have to advertise that as a meeting? And I don't know who plans on attending or not, so...
So I do have the answer on that one.
Okay.
It is going to be noticed as a special meeting in case three members show up. This is our standard practice when there are events such as this, and a majority of the council may or may not be there. So as a precaution, in the event that there might be three or more, we notice it as a special meeting.
Is there any other special criteria that we should be aware of at this meeting?
No other special criteria. I believe there's an, there's an announcement that's going to be posted on the city's website that's going to describe the, I saw earlier today a diagram of the site and some more information.
I think Mr. Vaca has some information you'd like to share.
So we wanted to brief the city council at some point. This is good timing, so thank you for the segue, and let you know that, of course, we would like you to participate, so you're all welcome, but we would like to stress the importance of engaging the community and giving them an opportunity to provide their input in a situation where they don't feel constrained by staff or any elected officials. So we're going to have a breakout session where staff engages whoever attends to try to solicit input in a more direct way, so we would recommend that the councilmembers not participate in those focus group sessions at the table breakouts. And we're going to be recommending the same to our planning commissioners, should they attend.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
I have one other question. Is there going to be, like, any food or anything there?
Of course, absolutely. We're going to have coffee, water, and some cookies and brownies.
Okay, any questions?
And Mr. Vaca, could you remind the public again what date this is and time, please?
Yes, absolutely. It's January 29th, next Tuesday evening, at the library at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Mr. Norman, anything else tonight?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Counselor, anything for me tonight?
I have no items.
Well, let's get down to the city council, and why don't we start with Susan? Do you have anything tonight you'd like to share?
I finally have things to share. So I have attended the, as an alternate, the Ventura County of Government, the Airport Authority, and this morning, not as an alternate, Streets and Transportation. And then last week, both Mr. Mulchay and I went to Sacramento for the League of California Cities, mayor and new councilmember training, which was really, was really good. It was well worth the time, great networking with other new members, and really helped to put a lot of what I've been learning over the past couple of months into some context, so I'm very glad to have been there. Earlier this afternoon, I was at the airport with Jorge Rubio for a tour and talk about the airport and the authority. And over the weekend, I was in Oxnard at the MLK Junior Celebration, which was a really nice, well-done program.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. Mr. Mulchay, anything tonight?
Yes, I got a few items. Thursday, January 10th, I also attended the Camrio Airport Authority meeting on, last week, with Mrs. Santangelo, January 16th and 17th, we were up in Sacramento. As she said, there were 440 other elected officials from cities all throughout California there. I share Mrs. Santangelo's sentiment in that it was a great, it was, it was, it was a great event, very informative sessions. I learned a lot, helped put a lot of what we're doing in context, helped kind of fill in a lot of the holes, at least my understanding. So it was terrific, and I can't say enough good things about it. And the League of California Cities is a tremendous organization, and I'm glad that we're a member of it. There's one thing that I would like to see if the city council would indulge me in, and this is in, considering that there are some fresh faces on the council, inevitably, we're, I know that we're going to look at, well, we may revisit certain items in which we've addressed, you know, formally and or informally over the last two years, particularly the last two years. There's one thing that, that kind of caught my eye in reviewing minutes, and that was the mention of amending our council's policy regarding awarding of community grants to include language that would limit, if not prohibit, the council from considering organizations where a current, a current city councilmember is serving as an officer, not necessarily on the board, not as a member of, but particularly an officer, whether that be the president, vice president, treasurer, secretary. I'm wondering if, if there's any, if there's, if the council would indulge me in discussing that, or placing that on a future agenda for this body.
Well, we could, we could go maybe to the subcommittee. I'm not exactly sure what you're asking specifically on that.
Whether it goes to the policy subcommittee or whether it comes back here, I don't, I don't know the proper procedure for that. So I'm kind of just putting it out there.
Typically, we could maybe put it on one of our subcommittee and talk about that, but we'd have to have some specific, exactly what's being requested here.
Right. It would go back to Policy Committee, and I think, just for clarification, I would ask the councilmaner to put his request in writing, and then I can send it to the Policy Committee.
Okay.
And we can see if it grows any legs and comes back here.
Sounds great.
Great.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's all, yeah? Okay. Vice Mayor Tremblay?
Okay, as far as meetings attended, on January 10th, the ribbon-cutting for the Rose Family Mortuary. January 17th, had the annual Economic Development Corporation meeting in Thousand Oaks. And then this morning, we had the Clean Power Alliance Finance Committee meeting. Very quickly, with regard to Clean Power Alliance, again, for folks who are out there, you're getting the mailers from both Clean Power Alliance, you've received a mailer from the city. We've done outreach on all different platforms. If you have specific questions regarding your rate, there is a rate calculator online under the Clean Power Alliance website. There is also a call center where you can direct questions. It's on the Clean Power Alliance website. I don't have that telephone number, I'm sorry, but it's there. Recall that this city council chose a 36% default tier for your electrical rates beginning February 1 under Clean Power Alliance. You have the ability to opt up and increase that amount of renewable energy to either 50% or 100%. You also have the ability to opt out of Clean Power Alliance and stay with Southern California Edison as an investor on utility. So there's a great deal of flexibility there. The Finance Committee today reviewed, and I just want my colleagues to know, the, an extensive audit report, annual audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2018, and it was a clean audit report. Well done, no, no significant issues whatsoever. And the Finance Committee also spent time today looking at an appropriate reserve policy for Clean Power Alliance. Second thing I wanted to ask about, and I'm glad Ms. Santangelo and Mr. Mulchay, you were at the Airport Authority. I'm continuing to hear, we had, I kind of started these discussions a couple of months ago when you were not on the council. I've been receiving concerns and/or complaints from folks who live near Nancy Bush Park, that there's an increased amount of air traffic going over the Nancy Bush Park area, that residential area, and it seems to be continuing. And the residents there, or one or more residents, as I understand it, contacted the Airport Authority and wanted it investigated further, but the Airport Authority would not allow them to file what I guess is the appropriate process in these instances, which is a noise The next authority meeting, I don't know if this was discussed on January 10th at the Airport Authority meeting, this item at all, but can I ask that you bring this up at the meeting of February 14? I can even put you in touch with the constituents who have been asking about it, and I would appreciate it if you would raise this issue at the Airport Authority meeting. Are you, Mr. Mayor?
Not on that.
Both of you?
Yes.
I think...
Yes, Charlotte and I are both on it, and then Susan is an alternate.
And Susan is an alternate. I would appreciate having a specific response from the airport regarding these, regarding this issue, so we can start getting to the bottom.
I am happy to ask that.
Okay.
And I know that in, on the Airport Authority, they give us a report of, of any noise complaints filed through them. It, it, it saddens me in that there was no address close to Nancy Bush Park, but if they're being, not, if they're not being enabled to file a complaint, then that's an issue.
They weren't allowed to file a complaint.
Yeah.
Which I, I don't understand from a process standpoint, it just doesn't make sense to me. So I'd like us to follow up and follow through on that issue and kind of get to the, I don't know whether it's just traffic pattern is changing, or whether there is whatever might be going on. I mean, I'm also mindful of the fact that, you know, because of the shutdown, that does affect, that does affect FAA as well, although I think we have controllers in the tower as we speak, so I'm not quite sure what's going on. I'd like to get to the bottom of it. Anyway, those are complaints that came to me, and I'd sure appreciate you following up on those.
Absolutely.
When is the next meeting?
February, I've got February 14. That's what it looked like on our council invite calendar, does that sound right? Valentine's Day.
Yeah. I'm sure you were read, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for me, thanks.
That it? Okay. So I attended a VRSD meeting, the VCOG meeting, I believe, Mr. Tremblay, were you there as well, too? We were at, what was it, up in Thousand Oaks, was that?
That was EDC.
EDC, yes. You were at the EDC as well.
I'm on the EDC.
Yeah. That was a good meeting, too. So I attended that along, I believe, Mr. Tremblay, I was there, it was a big group, there was a lot of people there. It was hard to keep track of everybody that was there. I also attended the Streets and Transportation Committee meeting this morning, the council member Santangelo as well. I'm glad you gave that report, Vice Mayor, about the Clean Power Alliances. I would encourage everybody to thoroughly read what's been mailed to you, because if you look, I think it was on the Clean Power one, that it's in kind of fine print, how they can opt out. And there is a pretty significant way that they could do it, but is my understanding, the one that I read was not completely delineated, it was in kind of a smaller box, it is there, but the really, the process of that is somewhat small, so I don't know if anybody else has had an opportunity to read that as well, but...
I've had some feedback on that, and the people who told me that they had elected to opt out, it's a very small number, said they called the call center, and it was accomplished very quickly.
Good.
So it's a pretty easy process.
I just encourage everybody to read the mailers, that's very important to read it, and I think they're pretty self-explanatory, but it's going to, and I've had a few calls, and I've explained to them that, you know, you're going to have to do a little legwork on this, but it's pretty delineated on, on the process here, so. All right. So with that, Mrs. Craven is not here yet, but with that, that's all I have tonight as far as the city council comments. So we can recess to our, I believe, our study session now? Can we get going on that early? I know it's an, it's an AB training, can we do that a little earlier than?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we're going to recess to our administrative conference room, and I want to reconvene our city council meeting, we're at the 7:30 part of our agenda, and Ms. Madeline, let's reflect the role that all councilmembers are present, and that's going to get us down to the flag salute. I'm going to ask Mr. Mulchay if he please lead us in a flag.
Absolutely. Everyone, please stand. Hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeffrey.
So I want to make an announcement tonight before we get going. We did have a series of very short meetings that typically we do one time a year, however, we do have two new councilmembers, and they weren't with us before, so we were not able to continue and finish that. And we did have a councilmember that was delayed at another public meeting here, so what we're going to do is finish those two agenda items, I think there's two, Counselor, or three of them, at the end of this session. However, I should ask, is there anybody in the audience that wants to talk about the Industrial Development Authority? These are usually meetings we just have once a year, or the Camrio Capital Improvement Corporation, or the Public Finance Authority?
Or the Community.
Or the Community Development Commission. Okay, so with that, we will actually deal with these at the end of this session here, so you don't have to be here and listen to us talk about these issues, so. So with that, we do have some presentations tonight. First, we have the announcement for the Chamber of Commerce Top 10 Community Award Winners, and I think that we've got, okay, welcome. And let me make, yes, the, the microphone is on, and I think you are very well-versed at this, so I'll let you proceed, please.
Oh, you're so sweet. Well, my name is Laura Mullen. For those of you who I have not had the opportunity to meet yet, I am the chair of your Camrio Chamber of Commerce.
You know, let me ask, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I was informed, it may be better if you came up here and did it on the dais, would you prefer to do that?
Sure.
Yeah, that might be better. I'm sorry? Oh.
You got to open the envelopes.
Okay, so we have the top 10 community award winners, and do you want to make that announcement?
I'm going to, I'm going to pass them off to you, and I'll let you announce our award winners. But I do want to let you know, our 52nd Annual Top 10 Awards will be held on March 22nd, so that's when we're going to be recognizing all of these individuals. Our event will be held at the Sarah Center from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we would love to have you join us. Tickets are available on our website. We received over 55 nominations for some very deserving Camrio residents, and we are thrilled to be able to present these awards to you tonight. So we are going to start with philanthropist of the year.
Okay. All right, we have the philanthropist of the year is Keith Barton.
Congratulations to him.
Congratulations to Keith. The volunteer of the year is Karen Allen. Congratulations to Karen. The Volunteer of the Year is Karen Allen, congratulations to Karen. Public Servant of the Year is Chris Dyer. Chris, congratulations to Chris. Senior of the Year is Adely Sullivan, congratulations to Adely. Youth of the Year is Camille Mashalak, I hope I pronounced that right, Mashalek.
Mahalak.
Mahalak, thank you, thank you. We have Educator of the Year is Nicole Sadowski, congratulations to her. Service Organization of the Year, Many Meals of Camrio, congratulations to them. Entrepreneur of the Year is Vince Pilarde, Vince, congratulations to Vince. And Business of the Year is Clinicus del Camino Real, congratulations to them. And Stand Daily Lifetime Achievement Award is Mr. Bill Little, congratulations to Bill. Woman of the Year is Lydia Noble Sprinkles, congratulations to Lydia. Is it Lydia or Lydia? All right, Man of the Year is David Mitchell, congratulations to David. All right, thank you so much, I really appreciate it, and congratulate all the winners, very well-deserved.
Let her tell everybody again when it is and...
Yeah, why don't you come up and tell exactly where it is?
So, again, our 52nd Annual Top 10 Awards is a beautiful gala, if you haven't had an opportunity to go, I would invite you to come, we're holding it on March the 22nd, where we'll be recognizing all of these individuals with short bio videos, and celebrating them and their accomplishments. It will be held at the Sarah Center from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and we look forward to seeing everyone there, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is the outgoing planning commissioners, I'll ask them to please meet me up on the foyer up here to the, my right. Okay, so I've got some plaques that I, this is one of the very few times that I've ever presented a plaque, they're very rare to give out, but they're very, very well-deserving to both of these gentlemen, as well as Walter Lusk, who was unable to attend, but these two gentlemen were longtime members of our planning commission, and did an outstanding job, and if you like what Camrio looks like, thank both of these two gentlemen when you get a chance to see them, they work tirelessly, extremely hard, they're very dedicated, with one specific situation and feeling that they want Camrio to be the finest city in the county, and both of these gentlemen exemplify this. So it's my unique pleasure to present this to Chris Valenzano, a planning commissioner from January 2015 to January 2019, and Chris, thank you so much for your tireless efforts on our behalf, I really appreciate, it's a very challenging job at times, and I, and as well as the council, really appreciate your efforts for this, Chris. Thank you very much. Next, we have Joe Hemmings, and Joe was a planning commissioner from January of 2007 to January of 2019, and Joe, again, along with his wife and his family, has shared countless hours to make this city a truly great city, and I know Joe really loves Camrio, and they're thrilled beyond belief that they live here, and he's a very solid individual, and we're very proud of you, Joe, and the council as well, and you did a yeoman's job at this, and it's my pleasure, my distinct pleasure, to present this plaque to you, and I wish you nothing but success, and hopefully you won't be a stranger, and that's true too, for you too, is Chris, so I want to present this to you, and I want to thank both of you so much for your efforts. I'm gonna have Chris and then Joe would like to make a few comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Tribble, council members, thank you for the true privilege of being able to serve on the planning commission for the last four years, it has been a true honor. Every decision that we have undertaken, I've always had the philosophy that the planning commission does not work for the builders, they don't work for staff, they work for the community. The point of planning commissioners is to make sure that the community's voice is heard, to make sure that the decisions that are gonna have a long-lasting impact on this community have actual community representation, and it's been a true honor, and I just want to challenge the incoming planning commissioners, and especially the city council, to keep that in mind for all of the decisions that they are gonna be making in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to say, it has been a true honor and a privilege to serve on the planning commission, I've enjoyed every minute of it, I made some very good friends, and I thank Jen McDonald for appointing me to the planning commission and reappointing me, she obviously had a lot of confidence in me. I'd also like to thank the city staff that supported us, the planning department, Public Works, and our city attorneys, not only friends, but they've done a great job in making sure that what we had to do on the meetings, we had the support, and we had all the information, and we realized, after every meeting, we would, we would thank the planning, planning department and others for their fine work, so, because we know how much hard work went into the applications and projects before we even, before we even saw those. You know, a friend of mine just moved here from Woodland Hills a couple of years ago, and I played golf with him, and he would say every now and then, I really am thankful I moved to Camrio, I really love it here in the city, so I asked him one day, I said, what most do you like about Camrio? He said, you know, it's a complete city, and I'm just happy I played one small part in helping Camrio to be a complete city, because I think that's what it's all about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city council members.
Thank you, Joe.
Your Honor, Your Honor, yeah, I want to thank both of you for the time you've, you've served, it was, excuse me, it was always obvious, watching planning commission meetings, that you both had read the packets and knew what you were talking about, and studied, and gone out and done things, and thank you for all the time and effort you put in.
Anyone else? Okay. Congratulations again, gentlemen, appreciate it. All right, so that gets us down to public comments, what do we have in public comments?
This person didn't indicate if it's a public comment or an item.
Okay.
And then you have those two.
Okay. All right, so I have three cards that were given to me, I know specific order here, for public comments, and I'll call you up as I receive them, Jennifer Dearden, is Jennifer here with us tonight? There she is, do you, do you want to come up and make a public comment? I didn't know if, it said, didn't indicate if a public comments or agenda item, do you have anything specific you want to talk on, because we can wait until that comes before the board if you'd like? This is just on general subject, non-agenda?
I'd rather wait.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. We have a Maria Ventura, is Maria here tonight? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
And Maria, we do have a three-minute time limit, but it does kind of, you go down from, get down to a minute, and it kind of cues you on what to do, so we do have a three-minute time limit, and there's quite a lot of people, so if you could keep it to three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Kildy, Mayor Pro Tremblay, city council members, city manager, and residents of Camrio. My name is Maria Ventura, and I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company here in Ventura County. As I'm sure you know, SoCal Gas distributes natural gas to the residents here in Camrio, allowing them to heat their homes and water, cook meals, and dry clothes economically and safely. Natural gas brings comfort and convenience to your residents. The employers in Camrio also rely on natural gas to cook meals at restaurants, to heat hotel rooms, and in many industrial processes. Natural gas is affordable and abundant, and the energy source of choice in homes and businesses for the many purposes I just stated. Natural gas is part of a balanced energy approach your constituents enjoy. I'm here tonight to raise your awareness of ongoing issues in California about which many people are unaware. California wants to set this balanced, balanced energy portfolio. California wants to electrify everything. A proposal which did not pass the legislature last year would have required all new buildings built after 2022 to be all-electric, and would require existing buildings to be retrofitted to be all-electric by 2030. While this proposal did not pass, you can be assured that more similar proposals will be coming. Think about how much you pay for electricity to cool your home in summer, how relatively little you paid in natural gas to heat your home in winter. Imagine paying all those electric bills year-round because you are forced to heat electricity, forced to cook electricity, and do everything else you do with natural gas with electricity. The proposals to force you to electrify your home are being made in the name of global warming, reducing greenhouse gas and carbon emissions, and other environmental goals. While these goals are laudable, a cost-saving analysis cannot justify such drastic actions, and you and every homeowner and business owner in Camrio are the ones who will pay. Let me be clear, SoCal Gas does not oppose electrification. If you want to only use electric appliances in your home, that's your choice, but don't take away that choice from those who want to use other fuel sources. The fact is virtually every home in Camrio already has electricity, and most also have natural gas. This is balanced, California enjoys the balance, wants this balance, and expects this balance to continue. There is an alternative, biogas or renewable natural gas is a natural gas which comes from organic sources such as green gas, green, green wastewater, wastewater, food waste, and ag waste. We could capture some of this gas, which now goes to the atmosphere, and clean it and inject it into our pipelines. If just 16% of the gas we deliver to customers comes from renewable sources, it will have the same effect on greenhouse gas emissions and electrifying all of California, and has much lower cost to everyone, and this is a realistic goal to achieve by 2030. The point is, you shouldn't have to choose between what some decision-makers in California want, and what's right for the environment, and what kind of, what families can afford. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Your Honor, I have a question.
All right, yes, Ms. Craven.
Maria, this was the first I heard of this bill being passed, and not being passed, but being introduced last year. If another bill, or the same bill, is reintroduced this year, a new bill is introduced, would you let us know, please?
Absolutely.
I don't know what we do, but we could certainly talk about it, and we would know about it and let other people know about it, too. Thank you.
Okay, so next, we have, oh, yes, I was gonna get to that. When we get further along in the agenda, we really, really strongly prefer that there's no clapping or any outward support either way, because we want to be fair to everybody, regardless of their particular personal position on it, so I would strongly encourage, if at all possible, please do not show any emotion when any speaker comes up to the di, to the microphone here. Okay, next on the public comment card is Matt Lorimer, is Matt here? Yeah, here's Matt, welcome. And Matt, I know you know the drill, so, welcome.
Do I know the drill? So I've talked about this last meeting, I think it's very important to talk about the borderline shooting in Thousand Oaks, the safest city in Thousand Oaks, you know the story is very sad. The key word again, response time. During that incident, one sheriff showed up, two highway patrolmen, you know the story, it's very sad. Our police station is on one side of town, again, I asked the city council, if Thousand Oaks can do a police substation, we should take one of the properties on the old, old part of town, the courthouse, the fire station, or whatever, and it should be a police substation. Why? If something happened at the university, response time, the city continues to grow, and if you look at this agenda tonight, you can see a lot of housing seems to be on the agenda. Again, response time. What do we learn from tragedies? Do we sit back in this city and do nothing, or do you guys move forward? And I'm gonna keep bugging you about it, I may not be a resident, I moved to Texas, but I spent many years in this community, I've talked about a police substation, and the thing is, response time. If your loved one, your father, your mother, your child, something were to happen on this side of town, and all the officers, when they get off, they're on the other side of the town, I think it would be very important to think about a police substation on this side of town. I hope the city council will consider that. Again, learn by mistakes, and borderline is a tragic thing, what it taught us is response time, we need additional police station on this side of town, I hope it consider that. The next thing I want to talk about, over the years, I've lived here, you know about the scandal, the Fiesta Association, I've talked, there's been many issues with this city regarding raises and everything else, things that are not disclosed to the public. I believe it's time that you shouldn't vote your own pay raise in, it's time to have a citizen advisory committee, and that committee, an ad should be put in the paper, on social media, a drawing should be, anybody who wants to run for that committee should come to the city council meeting, it's drawn in front of the public, that way you're not picking it, that way, people have an opportunity to vote for your pay raise. Who works and gets to vote on their own pay raise? Only you, as councilman. It's time to have clarity, and then also, Mr. Perry, when I asked him about investigation regarding Mr. Morgan, regarding the last sign, he said he wouldn't talk to me, he wouldn't respond, wouldn't say a word to me, wouldn't tell me why or anything. That's not transparency, transparency in government is to answer the question. If you don't like the question, then say, I don't like the question, but this is why we did it, but you should have an answer, this is America, this isn't a third-world country. Again, a citizen advisory committee is needed. Look at all the people tonight, I think we need that, I hope we'll consider that, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do not have any more blue cards on public comment, non-agenda items, is there anyone here that would like to address the council on a non-agenda public comment? Okay, so I'm seeing no one go forward, we will get down to the departmental, and it's the 2019 General Plan GPA Referral Request, and the annual status update of the existing GPA referrals. So staff, Mr. Vaca, would you like to take this one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kildy, and members of the city council. First, a brief overview in that the city's general plan is a document that's required by the state of California, that essentially establishes the blueprint for development in our community. Here in Camrio, our general plan consists of nine elements, with land use being the primary among them. It is a long-range comprehensive policy document, and it's periodically revised and updated as necessary, and based on City Council Policy 7.01, amendments may be considered each year in accordance with that policy at the second regular meeting in January. For 2019, there are two applications that have been filed for the city council's consideration. This is an overview exhibit demonstrating the two requests in red that we received for general plan amendment consideration, and first is the Bob Getch General Plan Amendment at Springville and the 101 for an industrial development, and the next is the Maddox Development, which is at the 101 in the Santa Rosa Pleasant Valley Road off-ramp, and that's a proposed general plan amendment for residential development. And then we have four pending general plan amendment applications that we're gonna provide a status update. It's important to point out that tonight, the only thing the city council is considering is the two applications in red to consider whether or not those should be referred for further study. Other general plan amendments that are under review are just gonna be provided a status update to the council and the public. So the first would be General Plan Amendment 2017-1, which is known as the Camino Ruiz Project on Verdugo Way for apartments. And then we have General Plan Amendment 2017-2 at the Camrio Springs Golf Course for the New Urban West Development of 300 senior affordable, excuse me, senior homes. And then we have the former Roadrunner, now Kenner, General Plan Amendment 2017-3 for the Vista Bus Maintenance Station. And then we have the Ranch Own Associates General Plan Amendment 2018-1 that was recently reviewed in December for residential development in Springville. So the first update will be on the Camino Ruiz Project that was referred for further study in February of 2017 by the city council, when they authorized the filing of a general plan amendment application. The request is to redesignate the existing industrial designation to high-density residential, over 14 acres located in the northern portion of an existing 20-acre property. The property is located at the southeast corner of Verdugo Way and The property is located at the southeast corner of Verdugo Way and Camino Ruiz. In March of 2017, the applicant filed the general plan amendment application and environmental questionnaire. And then in December of 2017, the residential plan development application was filed. And then more recently, in December of 2018, development allotment application was filed for 386 apartment units. So work has commenced on preparing the draft SEQA document, and we anticipate that that would continue with the draft being prepared towards the end of the second quarter of 2019. So in coordination with the environmental review process for this project and the proposed general plan amendment, there's also a change of zone application and a residential plan development application, and we anticipate beginning the public hearing process in the fourth quarter of this year. These maps, first, the general plan map demonstrates the existing industrial designation over the property and the existing limited manufacturing zoning over the property. So next is a status update on the Camrio Springs Project that's proposed by New Urban West. So the city council authorized the filing of a general plan amendment referral application in September of 2017, and the request is to redesignate 30 acres of the Camrio Springs Golf Course from the current quasi-public land use designation to low-medium density residential for up to 300 senior housing units, with the remaining 152 acres of the golf course property to remain as quasi-public for golf course use. The city council referral required various studies in order to analyze the general plan amendment and supplement the application, and I'm gonna outline those studies. First, a fiscal impact analysis is required to be prepared by a consultant that would be selected by the city and paid for by the applicant. And this fiscal impact analysis must include a land plan and a comparative analysis conducted on the various sizes of proposed golf course formats between a nine, a 12, and an 18-hole golf course configuration. It must also include a pro forma for installation and ongoing annual operation and maintenance for the various sizes of golf course formats, again, the nine, 12, and 18-hole configurations. And this must include but not be limited to providing identification of parties responsible for the ongoing annual operation and maintenance costs of the improvements that would be constructed as part of the project, including the golf course and the clubhouse. Also, a financial analysis detailing the sources and use of funds necessary to operate and maintain these new amenities. And analysis of capital costs for installation and ongoing annual operation and maintenance costs associated with the installation of the improvements as part of the proposed project, including but not limited to what was originally proposed for the dog park, water features, and pedestrian walking trails. This fiscal impact analysis must also include analysis of potential impact to property values, including analysis on the impact to property values of the existing established properties throughout the Camrio Springs community, and how the project may potentially impact those properties. How will the new development with the nine, 12, or 18-hole golf course, a new clubhouse, dog park, et cetera, potentially impact value of existing properties here in this Camrio Springs area that currently exist? Next, the focus was to ensure that the applicant provided a hydrology study and hydraulic study. A detailed hydrology and hydraulic study is required to analyze conformance with FEMA floodplain requirements to address localized stormwater flow along with the proposed development. And then, of course, SEQA would be required to be complied with. Staff anticipates that in the second quarter of 2019, scoping of the SEQA document will commence in anticipation of having the SEQA analysis prepared during this year, including completion of studies on the fiscal impact analysis and the analysis of impact to property In following up with the New Urban West, they've indicated that they've completed floodplain modeling to establish a detailed baseline for floodplain for the project area to research where the water's coming from, where it is going, and the volume of flows throughout the watershed. Also, the off-site watershed mapping and hydrology analysis has been started with research on local tributary watershed to develop runoff hydrographs and flood storage data. This work's intended to allow the applicant to model stormwater in the floodplain and develop potential engineering solutions. All hydrology studies will need to be submitted to the Ventura County Watershed Protection District and the city for review for ultimate review and approval subject to FEMA. In regards to community outreach, NEWI has indicated, NEWI's acronym for New Urban West, that they've continued to work with an advisory committee, which has also formed three subcommittees to address golf, food and beverage, and open space. And they'll be working with the applicant team on special issues of concern identified by the community. All subcommittees are chaired by local residents, and currently 39 residents are participating on a subcommittee to ensure resident feedback continues to be at the forefront of design and land use decisions. Regular subcommittee meetings will begin in January of 2019. So this is information provided directly from the applicant. So in conclusion, in coordination with the environmental review process under SEQA and review of the various studies that I outlined, the proposed general plan amendment and the change of zoning and companion residential plan development permits and tentative track map applications will begin a public hearing process, which may occur in the fourth quarter of 2019 if all the required studies are completed in a timely fashion. The general plan map shows the existing quasi-public land use designation over the existing golf course. And the existing zoning shows RE over most of the property with an RE 1-acre designation at the back of the golf course. Next is the annual status update on the former Roadrunner, now Kenner LLC, General Plan Amendment Application 2017-3. This was authorized by the city council for processing on February 22 of 2017 for a general plan amendment that would consider changing the land use designation from agriculture to industrial over approximately 3.4 acres of land that was adjacent currently to Roadrunner's existing Vista Bus Maintenance Station at the end of 240 Glen Drive. So these 3.4 acres are located in the northeastern section of an existing 104.85-acre neighboring agricultural property. The concept for the applicant is to expand their existing bus maintenance station to provide additional land for parking and storage of non-Vista buses and additional employee parking. Mrs. Sandland, who is the primary manager of Kenner LLC, has indicated that over the past year, Roadrunner has negotiated a purchase agreement with another transportation company that has ultimately acquired Roadrunner. And Kenner LLC intends to continue working with the new owners of Roadrunner on the planning process for this general plan amendment. This will also include a zone change, a plan development permit, and environmental analysis subject to compliance with our SEQA requirements. So the general plan map demonstrates the property here outlined in the yellow hash and its existing land use designation is agriculture with a small component of industrial. And the existing zoning is agricultural exclusive. So the general plan amendment you're most familiar with, because you recently analyzed this in December of 2018, is now a general plan amendment application 2018-1 for Ran and Rancho Associates and the Springville Development. And as you recall, in December of 2018, you approved a general plan amendment referral, which was a modification to an existing referral from 2014 for an updated land plan. And the land use plan for the site proposes a five-acre public neighborhood park out at the corner of Springville and Ponderosa, and 24 and 1/2 acres of low-medium density residential for the balance of the specific plan area that is subject to the change for up to 158 single-family detached units, and the property is west of Springville Drive, just north of the 101 freeway. And overall, this would have been a reduction in the number of units and a change from attached townhomes to two-story detached single-family homes. So of the 24 and 1/2 acres of low-medium density residential land, 21 and 1/2 acres are proposed to be developed, as I said, with 158 homes. And the remaining three acres will accommodate a landscape berm and a Class 1 bike trail. And the northeast corner of the property that's currently zoned professional office and contains the Shoaly Farmhouse would be then changed to a park. And in 2017, geologic fault investigation trenching was completed, and no faulting in the area was discovered. The SEQA review will also include analysis on the Shoal Farmhouse and potential mitigation, because we know the current location conflicts with the future extension of Ponderosa Drive. The property owners indicated they intend to preserve the farmhouse if that's feasible. So staff anticipates that the SEQA review process, the general plan amendment, and companion residential plan development applications will begin the public hearing process in the fourth quarter of 2019. The existing general plan land uses are varied, so there was a proposed park that's gonna be relocated out to the corner. And then it was all currently low-medium density residential with some medium-density residential, and it's proposed to all be the low-medium. And the existing zoning is RE, residential plan development permit, and PO. So that concludes the status updates, and there's no action for the city council to take on those status updates. And next, we're gonna get into the two application requests we have for proposed amendments to the general.
Could I ask a question right now?
We have a question, yes, Ms. Graven.
Yeah, you went through the four that have status updates at some later date after all of those studies and everything, that SEQA and everything have been done. Those are going to come back to us for a decision, is that correct?
Yes, it would come back to you for a decision, and it would first go to the Planning Commission through public hearings, and then ultimately to the city council for public hearings and a decision.
But they'll all be back later?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So...
Any other questions, Mr. Vaca?
Okay. Please proceed. I'll move on to the first request, which is from David Maddox. And the application is to amend the general plan land use element designation from a current low-density residential designation to low-medium density residential over an existing 7.76-acre property located south of the 101 freeway, west of Cuyahoga Creek. So the 7.76 acres, again, they're located at the ends of Cottage Grove Avenue and Flora Vista Avenue in Woodside Greens Community. This property is adjacent to the 101 freeway at the southbound off-ramp at Santa Rosa Road and Pleasant Valley Road. And the request is to go from low-density residential, which has a maximum of five units per acre, to low-medium density residential, which would allow a maximum of 10 units per acre. And the vacant property is currently zoned rural-exclusive, one unit per five-acre maximum lot size. The applicant's request is for consideration of amending the general plan to accommodate the development of 38 two-story homes and a new street for access. In addition to the general plan amendment, if this proposal is referred for further study, this application would also need to include a zone change, a land revision, and environmental analysis subject to compliance with SEQA requirements. The aerial photograph here demonstrates the property's location, and it's highlighted in yellow. So again, the site is just south of the 101 freeway at the Pleasant Valley Road, Santa Rosa Road, southbound off-ramp. And the existing land uses surrounding the site are the 101 freeway to the north, and then we have an existing low-density, single-family detached housing neighborhood to the south. All the homes on this Milpiss Street are all one-story. Then we have Cuyahoga Creek to the west, and we have the off-ramp here to the east. So the site is currently under agricultural production of nursery stock, and it's vacant of any structures. The existing general plan land use designation, as I've indicated, is low-density residential. And the existing zoning is rural-exclusive with a five-acre minimum lot size. This is a proposed concept site plan from the Maddox application that shows a connection street through the neighborhood off of the Milpiss Streets, and then the location of 38 two-story homes, and then adjacent to the 101 freeway. And then these are renditions of the two proposed architectural styles for two two-story So next is the second general plan amendment referral request that we received on the application of Bob Getch. And this request is for industrial development to amend the general plan land use element from 26.1 acres general commercial and 16.49 acres industrial to 39.59 acres industrial and three acres general commercial, and the property is located south of the 101 freeway and west of Springville Drive. So the request is to change the land use designation of approximately 46.88 acres of land in total. That would have 4.29 acres set aside for auto access, leaving 42 and 1/2 acres net. The request to change the land use designation of an existing 26.1 acres of general commercial and the 16.49 acres of industrial to a total of 39.59 acres of industrial and three acres general commercial for, again, the property located south of the 101 freeway at Springville Drive. The intent is to provide for various industrial uses with 27 and 1/2 acres of limited manufacturing zoning, 6.26 acres of light manufacturing M1 zoning, 5.77 acres of general manufacturing M2 zoning, and then three acres of commercial plan development zoning for general commercial retail uses, and again, with 4.3 acres of land for vehicle access and circulation. It's important for the city council to note that there are agreements on this property, numbered 2016-56 and 2016-56A, that have been recorded on title of the property that stipulate a regional destination retail use is to be located on the existing 26 acres of commercial land use designation. A referral of a general plan amendment here is subject to the current property owner and the city approving a termination of the existing agreements. And this would need to be presented to the city council for review and approval at a future city council meeting if this general plan amendment referral request is granted further study option to submit a general plan amendment application. If that happens, also, in addition to a general plan amendment, if this is referred for further study, the application would need to include a zone change, a change to the Airport North Specific Plan, an industrial plan development permit, a tract map, and environmental review under SEQA. So again, the site is located south of the 101 freeway and west of Springville Drive. It's located just north of the Camrio Airport. We have industrial development to the west. There's an approved shopping center known as the Amara Commercial Shopping Center to the east, however, the property remains vacant. And the overall site is 46.88 acres and is currently vacant. The current general plan designates in red the 26 acres of commercial, and the remainder is research and development industrial. And then the zoning corresponds appropriately as commercial plan development over the commercial and limited manufacturing over the industrial. The applicant, Bob Getch, provided this request for the land use plan, which also demonstrates zoning. So the light blue is industrial research and development with limited manufacturing zoning designation. Then we have industrial over the darker blue with M1 and M2, respectively. And then out at the corner of Springville Drive and Ventura Boulevard is the three acres of commercial. We always provide information relative to our compliance and work towards our regional housing needs assessment numbers that we've adopted in our housing element. So I'll quickly go through this. But our current housing element for the regional housing needs assessment time period from 2014 to 2021 requires that we provide for zoning to accommodate 2,224 residential units. 905 of which should be in the low-income category, 411 should be in the moderate-income category, and 908 should be in the above-moderate category. So under the land inventory that was in place at the time the housing element was adopted, demonstrated that we complied, that we had enough land zone to accommodate those numbers. And then we also take it out a little bit further and show how many units have been constructed from 2014 to current. So in the low-income category, we've constructed 160 as of December of 2018. And in the moderate category, we've constructed 827 units and above-moderate 536. And then we also have approved entitled projects for the various income categories. So not yet built but approved is 110 low-income units, 393 moderate, and then 789 above-moderate. So the takeaway here is when we add up what's been built since 2014 and how many units are currently approved and have existing entitlements, we can see what numbers we would actually anticipate building during this regional housing needs assessment timeframe through 2021. through 2021. And the takeaway, again, is that we've, um, achieved compliance with what the goals have been set forth for the moderate-income category and the above-moderate-income category, but we fall short when it comes to providing low-income units here in Camrio to meet compliance with this housing element goal. And then using the monthly report from December of 2018, we'll highlight that we have 10 approved and titled commercial projects that cover 76 acres that could accommodate 782,404 square feet of commercial building area. And we also have 13 approved and titled industrial projects that span 111 acres that could allow up to 525,889 square feet of industrial building. So, tonight, after deliberation and hearing from the public, the city council should make a motion to provide direction on the two separate requests. One first from David Maddox for the 38, uh, two-story residential units in that general plan amendment request, and then also on the Robert Getch industrial general plan amendment request to determine whether or not they can file applications to amend the city's land use element of the general plan. And if the direction is to allow them to move forward, and there's a request for any special issues or studies that need to be presented to the city council and planning commission and staff as part of that analysis, you could also include that this evening as well. So, that concludes the staff presentation.
All right, so is there any questions, as staff, Mrs. Craven, on request one or two?
I have questions on, well, first, on, on number two. I don't know if you want to take these individually, but let me get my, first of all, uh, tonight's decisions don't have any real strings attached. These are totally discretionary, one of our few discretionary things we can do, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it's just what we want to do here. Uh, second, on number two, um, do I remember correctly that that property, whatever it was called in the past, heavily contributed to the, uh, Springville Bridge, or were, were no fees that, have any, have, have, have they already paid some fees attached to Springville Bridge and other infrastructure around there?
Yeah, the public works directors indicating they have not yet paid the fees. And that's, to my knowledge, they haven't been, um, levied yet for that property. It's known formally as the Selig Industrial slash Regional Destination Retail Commercial Property.
Right, and before that, it was, uh, was that Farrow?
It, it was Selig Industrial before that.
Well...
And then before that, I believe...
When, I'm talking when we built Springville.
Right, no, I believe it was Farrow.
It, it was Farrow, and I thought that he paid a bunch of fees.
I thought he did too, for like the extension of Ventura Boulevard and things of that nature.
There was some infrastructure improvements that were completed for Ventura Boulevard and the realignment and storm drain improvements, but they didn't pay the fee you're talking about, which is the Springville interchange bridge assessment fee.
Okay, but did, did they pay? In other words, this land's been there a long time, and we thought it was going to, at one time, thought it was going to be developed about the time the Springville Bridge was, was built. And, uh, all of those properties contributed to something, so have they paid, my question is, maybe I asked the question wrong, have they paid a lot of fees already for infrastructure? Whether it was the bridge or the road being realigned or whatever?
No, the majority of fees have not been paid.
Okay.
As was mentioned, some improvements, um, were fronted with the extension of Ventura, realignment and extension of Ventura Boulevard, but the, the bulk of the fees are yet to be paid on the project.
Okay, they'll, they'll be assessed at, at the time it's developed, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Shae, would you like to ask a question?
Uh, first off, starting with project two, the industrial, you, you spoke of an agreement that would, that we would essentially void in this case. That agreement is, stipulates what the adjacent property would be, that it would be solely commercial, is that right? Do I have my understanding correct?
There's an agreement on the existing subject property.
Just the subject property that we're discussing?
Correct.
Not the adjacent, what is the Amara Shopping Center was?
Yeah, it has no, nothing to do with Amara, correct.
Okay. If I, I, I do have questions on...
Proceed.
All right. Project one, so, I want to make sure I establish my facts. For the Maddox property adjacent to, um, Woodside Greens, right now, he is rural-exclusive, that's one unit per five acres. He's asking for a change to low-medium density, which is ten, a maximum of 10 units per acre. Our general plan, right now, has it designated for low-density, which is up to a maximum of five units per acre. He's asking for low-medium density, so that way he would accommodate his, the 38 units he's proposing. If we were to provide that change, is there any, is there any, can, can he propose more? Considering if he has 7.76 acres, although he's proposing 38 units currently, if we give him the low-medium density, he could hypothetically build up to, say, excess of 70 units on that land. Is there anything here limiting that ability? Is there any way to stipulate that he, he would only be able to build the 38?
That's a good question. You would have to limit that through zoning, if you wanted to, and make it specific. So, for instance, we have residential plan developments, and then we put a number on that that puts a cap on the maximum number of units per acre. So, it, it would have to go through, um, a combination of a general plan amendment and the zoning to be, uh, able to address that question.
Okay. And then from an aesthetic or from a, from a development standpoint, placing a row of two-story houses adjacent to a row of one-story houses, is that common? Is that, does that follow any kind of best practices, or what about our, when it comes to our general plan? How do we interpret that?
So, we have a community design element, our general plan, and the city historically has taken site planning and architecture so seriously that they've elevated their design review guidelines to the point of including them in the general plan as a design element. And, um, it's, carries the same weight as the land use element, for instance, and it addresses compatibility issues in our community design element. And typically, we want to ensure that if we have a mix of two-story and single-story homes, that there's appropriate setbacks so that we preserve the quality of life for existing and future residents. So, it's a compatibility issue.
That is all I have right now, and I'll probably come up with more questions later.
Mr. Trembley, did you?
I've got two questions, one on project number two and the other a generic. First of all, with respect to project two, um, what, uh, and this happened basically before my time, but we're talking about a destination retailer. Can you give us, what is the prognostication or, or information, if any, on the prospects for a, a destination retailer at that site? Maybe you can sort of sketch this in a little bit?
Well, first, I'll start with the general definition. So, at the time, the applicant, property owner, developer was trying to seek a regional destination retailer, and that term is defined as someone that's not currently located within the county or within, um, close proximity to the city of Camrio. So, an example is there's only a handful of IKEAs in the Southern California region, and there's none in Ventura County. So, IKEA would theoretically be characterized as a regional destination retailer. So, that's how the, um, origination of that came about, and we didn't want to go through a process of not having input as a city on who that regional destination retailer user was. And so, we entered into an agreement with the property owner at that time that the city council had authority to review and approve who that user was to be. And at this time, the request is to change the, uh, land plan to go back to industrial. So, they want to eliminate that agreement, terminate that agreement.
Question number two, and it's more generic, can you go back to the slide that's got the RHNA numbers on it? Please. Let me, I want to frame the question the right way. What is the per, I'm going to ask you a compound question, sorry, Mr. Vaca, what else? What is the purpose of the RHNA, RHNA numbers, and why does the city care? I, no, I don't mean that as a provocative question.
No.
But, but it has some import, and I want to make sure I understand.
I think that's an important point to raise, and most people aren't even aware that we have these numbers. But what happens is, the state breaks the state into various land use fragments. So, we happen to be part of the Southern California Association of Governments Metropolitan Planning Organization, and then we have our own, um, smaller component in Ventura County where we have to share in providing for, meeting the state's needs for housing for persons of all income categories throughout the county. So, each city and the county is given a regional housing needs assessment number that, in our case, is presented here. So, for the timeframe of 2014 through 2021, we're supposed to achieve zoning to accommodate 905 low-income units, 411 moderate, and 908 above-moderate, which would total 2,224 units, which would meet our fair share here in Camrio for regional housing needs in Ventura County. That number is given to us through SCAG, but it's presented to us by the state. Then we have to craft our housing element, which, again, is an element in our general plan, which is a blueprint for development in our community. And it's used as a, a tool that we must comply with, or we could potentially lose funding sources from the state. And you've heard probably recently in the, um, news that our new governor is looking at this more voraciously than has been looked at in the past. So, this could potentially be changing in the next regional housing needs assessment cycle, which will start in 2021 also. And so, this is how, um, we receive these numbers, and then we have to get a certified housing element through the state to comply with those numbers.
Mr. Trembley, would you like to proceed, please?
I, I would, thanks. Okay, so, let's just segue into that a little bit. We, you've indicated that we are starting on a new RH, RHNA process, correct? Can you give an idea of what the city is doing or has accomplished already with respect to that new cycle?
So, the first step is to do a thorough review of the existing demographic profile for the community. We had a study session about eight months ago where we outlined population, employment, and housing projections, and we, um, went through a very thorough analysis, including boots-on-the-ground counting, physical count of all the housing units in the city. And then we, um, used our, um, population projection to carefully determine what our population projections will be based on household size. And then we used employment numbers, and we were working on our economic development strategic plan, so our consultant also helped facilitate on what our employment numbers would be. And then that baseline data is, um, disseminated to SCAG and verified through SCAG, and we make sure that it's consistent with our numbers because we know they're correct and accurate. And then they'll be using that to determine what our future regional housing needs assessment should be.
All right. And then now let's go back, uh, from, um, what is going on in the future, uh, with the RH, the next cycle, and come back to now. And I want to ask you, I, I think you've indicated generically that there are certain remedies that the state can employ if a municipality does not meet its RHNA numbers. And my question to you is going to be, well, what impact, if any, you know, is this? In other words, what does this really mean? And you mentioned some state funds. Can you be more specific on what the adverse remedies, if any, are to the city if the city does not meet its RHNA numbers?
I know that there's been instances where funding has been withheld, and then there's been instances where all building permits were put on hold, so cities weren't allowed to issue building permits for development.
Well, what funding are you referring to? I, I'm trying to drill down to make sure that I understand exactly or specifically.
I don't, I don't have any personal experience with this, I just know anecdotally that that's happened out there.
And, and we know anecdotally that the governor is really focused, and the legislature is very focused on this, based on the legislation that's, has been...
Yes.
...the last couple of years.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you might add too, Mr. Trembley, my understanding, when he gave his acceptance speech, he specifically mentioned the cities.
Yes.
And their developmental policies, uh, in the past, is that, is that correct? Is that what you, uh, were somewhat referring to?
Somewhat referring to, and, and more obliquely to the loss of discretion on, the gradual loss of discretion on the part of municipalities relative to discretionary approval of development, uh, and that coming more from the state on a top-down basis as opposed to local control. So, that's, that's why, well, that's why I asked the question regarding RHNA.
Could I just?
Craven, do you have a...
Your, your, uh, questions were with regard to, to housing RENA numbers, but as I understand it, all we have to really do, according to the current law, is have law, uh, enough land zoned, we don't have to have built it.
Yes, that's correct under current law.
Thank you.
That finishes my questions.
Okay.
I have...
Question, Ms. Susan?
I'm new, so I'm reading these applications, and, um, for the Maddox, the, the project one, um, on page two of the application is a section that asks, um, the review criteria and questions one through four, and the questions are aimed at substantiating the reason for the change of land use. And I read the answers, um, they don't seem to be responsive to the questions at all. Is that, am I missing something, or is...
No. You're not missing anything.
I'm not, okay. So, there's no other page or something I didn't see, okay. My second question kind of goes back to the RENA numbers, uh, do we know at this point if any of this is, is affordable, or what the...
No, we don't.
Okay. And then my last question, um, it's hard to tell with the plan of the, the, um, the new homes, will they be right up against the backyard of the existing homes? Is there any space between them, or will they...
So, yes, they will be right up against the homes. So, if you see here, this is a property line. And then...
That will be right on the...
That's this property line right here.
And there's no other, um, planned entrance or exit to that community besides, um, Poncho and, I can't remember the name of the other one, um, Ridgeview?
No.
Ridgeview? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Joe, just have one question before we get, uh, down to this. On the, uh, request number two, the Getch, my regulation, my recollection is that it was zoned, the zoning was changed, but it's, he typically is asking to go back to a previous zoning that was before we changed it. Is that technically, to a certain extent, correct?
Generally, it is, although there's some components here that are M1 and M2, which it was all originally limited manufacturing for industrial research and development. So, it's all industrial, and that sense, it's consistent with what was originally, um, anticipated there. But there are a couple areas where they're proposing heavier industrial, and then there's one corner intersection where they'd like commercial. They talked about maybe retail or a service station.
And that is compatible with the airport, uh, zoning plan?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so what we'll do is we'll take, uh, request number one and then request number two. The first is number one, Maddox. Do we have any blow? Did you put Maddox first? Okay, you did, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, this is it, okay. So, we'll take, uh, request number one, Maddox first, and I'm going to call, we do, I do have several cards here. I haven't had a chance to really peruse them to see exactly which item this is, but I will call you up as they were submitted to me. And again, uh, we do have a three-minute rule, if you could follow that, it would be greatly appreciated. First one, uh, is Paul Andre, is Paul here tonight? Yes, Paul, you want to come on up here, please? And again, Paul, if you'd put that microphone real close to you so we can all hear, it'd be really appreciated. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning. Yeah.
Five this morning.
Oh, dear.
I'm kind of, uh, I'm very concerned about this, uh, request for an increase in zoning, especially since it's dou, doubling what, uh, the prior, uh, request was from five per acre to 10 per acre. And there's a, a number of issues that I'm concerned about. One is that the land in this area, should the 101 freeway need to be widened, and we all know eventually it has to be because the traffic is getting progressively worse and all of us experience it every day, some of that land, including the off-ramp, will need to be shifted south into this property. So, that should also be considered as far as, uh, building in this area. Also, we really should be concerned about the health of the residents that will live in this area. You're literally on top of the freeway, and it doesn't appear that there's going to be a buffer. The development that's on the northbound off-ramp to Santa Rosa Road that was just The development that's on the northbound off-ramp to Santa Rosa Road that was just completed, that has the Spanish architecture, there is a large buffer back from the freeway to at least give those people some space from the pollution that's created on the 101. Also, Mr. Maddox states that his property designs are compatible with the community. They may be compatible with the city's design criteria, but it isn't with this housing track. Everything within this housing track is of a ranch style. Nothing is of Spanish architecture. Every property, he also states in his proposal that a lot of these properties can be sharing Properties like that are not even, nothing within the Woodside Greens has shared driveways. They have large setbacks on the sides. Some of the, most of the properties have room for RVs. And basically summarizing my thoughts on this, the request for extra density in here is strictly profit-oriented. Mr. Maddox wants to make as much money as possible. He doesn't really have concern about the impact on the community. He just wants to make his money and move on. And the council is the conduit from which to control abuse of zoning. And I urge that you deny this referral for further consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there an applicant here tonight? Is the applicant here?
He just walked out.
If you'd like to, yeah, come up and.
So.
Address, please.
Turn on the mic.
The mic is on.
My name's David Maddox. I'm the president of D.B. Maddox Incorporated, who is the entity of the property that we're discussing tonight. I'm a lifetime resident of Camarillo. In fact, my wife and I went to kindergarten together at Camera High School many years ago. I've been a custom home builder in Camarillo for 35 years and try to pride ourselves on building quality products. The property that we're discussing tonight does have, as you know, access from Cottage Grove Avenue and Flora Vista Avenue. We've owned the property since March of 1999. It's 7.76 acres, all flat. The purpose of the general plan amendment request is to change the land use designation from low density, which allows up to five dwelling units per acre in a cluster, to allow us to develop five dwelling units per acre as individual fee simple parcels. We've submitted a conceptual plan that will have five units per acre, each with their own individual fee simple land, along with the homes that would be built. The parcel is a long rectangular shape and has taken some creativity to come up with a design that would, that we feel will meet the city of Camarillo's high standards for residential development and be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and is economically feasible to move forward with. The project is designed with 38 single-family, two-story homes on approximately 6,200 square-foot parcels. The orientation of the homes that we have are just for theoretical purposes. We're glad to meet all setback requirements that the planning department will have for us as they have the standards. We'll be connecting Cottage Grove Avenue and Flora Vista Avenue with a new connecting road. We will be building a block wall and landscape planter that will be a pleasant barrier between the property and the 101 freeway. There will be two designated recreational pocket parks, one on each end of the property. The development project will meet the city of Camarillo's heritage zone requirements as found in section 10.2.5 of the city's general plan. The homes will be approximately 1,700 to 1,900 square feet, three to four bedrooms, three bathrooms, with an optional office downstairs and two-car garages. As the developer will strive to provide high-quality homes at affordable pricing. The proposed project will meet all of the city goals and objectives found in the city of Camarillo's general plan for residential areas, found in section 10.3.2. This project will maintain high quality of craftsmanship, respect the surrounding context, be integrated and compatible with the surrounding land use and neighborhoods, provide for a safe and secure neighborhood with sidewalks, street trees, and linkage to common areas, enhance and maintain the city's aesthetic beauty and visual character. The proposed development will meet the guidelines that are consistent with reviewing, when reviewing, residential development areas as found in 10.3.4 of the city's general plan. This project will maximize the visual appearance by the use of shared common driveways and home orientation, have open street patterns, and create a network of circulating connections with multiple points of access, have parkways and tree-lined planted areas to provide and enhance the walkability and peacefulness of the neighborhoods, have the creation of two-pocket parks that are found within the project, and we will meet the residential design criteria found in section 10.2.5, heritage zone. We have or will meet all of the concerns that have been brought up in the pre-application review process. The neighboring Woodside Greens will be enhanced by several additional noise reduction elements: property line wall, landscape planter, two-story homes, and site landscape with many trees. The proposed development is consistent with recently approved city developments. For example, Tesoro Blas Homes has three-story structures. We're proposing two-story structures. Tesoro Blas has no barrier sound wall at the property line. We're proposing a new barrier wall with landscape planters at the property line. Tesoro Blas is 35 to 33 feet from the property line to the 101 freeway. We're going to be plus or minus 40 feet from the property line to the 101 freeway. Tesoro Blas is 71 feet from their property line to building structures. We're proposing to be 80 feet from property line to building structures. We will submit the required post-construction water management plan. We will submit an earthquake fault zone study. We will submit a traffic study report as required. A 60-foot wide access easement has already been set aside in Track Mack 3761 off of Flora Vista Avenue. The development has been modified to accommodate a 60-foot wide right-of-way. The proposed street curves have been modified to accommodate the required radiuses. We will comply with the required conditions set by the city or the county of Ventura Fire Department, and we've met with the city traffic engineer, Jason Samate, and will work to accommodate a possible off-ramp expansion at the Pleasant Valley Road southbound exit. In conclusion, we feel that this is a good project for the city of Camarillo to work with, with us on, and feel it'll be a good compatible project for the surrounding neighborhood. Do you have any questions for me at all?
I have some questions.
Mrs. Craven does. Thank you.
Yeah, you said there was going to be a barrier wall, sound barrier wall, that'll be at the property line?
Yes.
And how tall is that?
I think visually you'll see about six feet, seven feet.
Okay.
It'll be raised, we'll have earth below it with planting below it. And on the other side, on the property side, we'll have a large planter with trees and plants.
Okay, thank you. And you said that they would be priced affordably. Give me just a round-dollar idea of what your idea of affordable is. What are you thinking? I mean, affordable is different things to different people.
Well, I would venture to say that they'll be in the lower third of the price of homes in Camarillo.
Okay, so they go from $1,005,000 down to $250,000, so?
I would say they're going to be in the bid $600,000 range.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Any other questions, Susan?
You may have answered the question I had before you spoke, when I was talking about the application and the reason for the request for the land use designation. And I think I saw something in your slide that said something about the clustering of the homes? Is that?
Well, the way that the general plan reads is that the general plan currently allows us to have five homes per acre in a cluster. I'm not sure what a cluster is, but we want five homes per acre on their own individual parcels. Supposedly, that's not a cluster. So it's, we're really, it's really not much of a request for an amendment, but it's, I guess it's semantics of what a cluster is and what a cluster isn't, so.
So you're not really changing the density?
Well, not from?
In terms of number of homes?
Correct. We don't want any more than five, Mr. Mulchey, we don't want any more than five homes per acre. We want them to have as much space as we can on their parcels. So they'll be individually owned. If a cluster is a townhome or a shared property line, that's not what we want.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Mr. Mulchey?
General plan currently designates that area as low density, and under that, you'd be able to get 35 homes on that plot of land. And you're asking for low, medium density. Go up to 70, but you're asking for 38. It's a difference of three homes. Why not go, why not ask for low density and settle at 35?
Well, it is, it is low density now.
Right.
Just when we did the layout and the planning and the budgeting for the cost that it's going to take to cover the fees and expenses, it just seemed to fit together at 38. When we first came into the planning department at the city camera, they told us that we could do 38. That's how we designed everything. Once we got into it, they said, well, that's 38 if you do clusters, but it's less if you don't do clusters. So it's been a little confusing, but this is what we feel would work well for the site. And you just think this is a good proposal for us. We're willing to work with the city however we need to, to make the project work.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions, Tremblay? Yeah, it might be a little, have you thought about any affordable housing component in the project?
I haven't, but glad to talk about it and try to figure out if something makes sense to do that, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have some more cards on this particular issue here, and the next is Sue Kronk. Is Sue here? Yeah, come on up, Sue. And if you can move the microphone real close, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a lot shorter. My name is Sue Kronk. I'm a native of Ventura County and have lived a long time in Camarillo. Currently, we live on Milpa Street, backing to the freeway, so we've been there for 19 years. And I did a little research today, and the land associated with this project was required by the city to be designated as a noise buffer zone when Woodside Green was developed. As I combed the city records today, I found a declaration restriction that was recorded with the city, with the county on June 11, 1984, which established that no building or structure shall be erected, constructed, placed, or permitted on the property. This restriction was clearly reinforced by the city in a letter in 1997 to Mr. Tom Staven. Nothing permanent should be erected on this parcel, period. Furthermore, in reviewing the Maddox project application, it does not adequately address any of the guidelines in policy 7.01, general plan amendments, as Mrs. Santangelo pointed out. The application, the applicant had failed to substantiate why the plan should be amended. Specifically, in responding to the policy guidelines, the applicant failed to state what changes to the general plan goals, policies, physical, social, or economic changes had occurred to substantiate the amendment to the present designation of low-density residential. On page 10 of your information packet, the applicant's response is limited to a very general project description, which does not address why his project is appropriate for this parcel, given the declaration restriction. The applicant failed to state what substantial changes in the environmental characteristics affecting the property and its uses have occurred, creating its, again, a limited-to-very-general description. And this continues throughout the applicant's, the application. The only thing that he referred to was the Tesoro Blas Townhomes as the sole rationale for amending the plan, but he ignores the adverse viewshed impacts to Woodside Greens and the placement of 15 of the proposed 38 two-story homes within 10 feet of the Milpa Street backyard fences. Simply put, the project is a bad idea and clearly in conflict with the general plan's intent of assured quality housing development. Please terminate this application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Matt Lorimer, I believe you wanted to speak on this one. It says request number one. Is that right? Yeah.
This reminds me of the San Fernando Valley. Shove it wherever there's a space. Not necessary, folks. So let's start with this program. It's going to be very interesting. So you have a single-family neighborhood, and now you want to allow a two-story, so now you're going to destroy the value of the neighbors, so when they're barbecuing, they can look up and see somebody watching them barbecue in the privacy of their yard. So you're destroying the neighbor's value. Bad idea. Second idea, we have fireworks at the school. What's going to happen when the windows start shattering and they come here and they want us to the city because you approved the two-story, and you know the windows are going to be shaking? Third thing, they also have football games. The lights are going to be blaring in on those houses. What's going to happen when those people come down here and you approve that? Okay? Fourth thing, you know something? You come down the grade, is that what Camarillo's come to the point where the governor's going to call the shots and say shove it wherever? And basically, do we want to look at a two-story? It's wrong. It doesn't look good. Those are pretty good mitigating factors in this whole thing that we're looking at, folks. I mean, this is, you know, I know Tony there, and some of the people said, well, the governor's going to mandate that. What's next? You know, we see Kmart, they want to build houses. Next, they're going to come and mandate skyscrapers in Camera. There has to be a point where common sense makes sense. This has got to be the worst idea that's ever come across. Two-story against a single-story homes looking in their backyard. Horrible idea. And again, let me remind you, there's many events at Camera High School. Imagine when those homes are sold and he's somewhere in the Florida Keys enjoying his money, okay? And these people come here and they say, why? Why, Tony? Well, why, Charlotte? Why, Kevin? Why did you approve that? I look out and my windows start shaking when the fireworks are there. Oh, you know, we bought those houses. I think you should relocate the fireworks show. That's because a bad decision was made. And also, those people's backyards. And also, when you drive through Camarillo, you guys have had berms, okay? I don't think you can put a berm there. I think it should be single-family. I don't think anything should be there, to be honest with you. I think Camarillo, you got to, guys, you got to take a stand here, folks. Every square inch of Camarillo cannot look like Woodland Hills or San Fernando Valley. All right? I mean, come on.
Please, no clapping. Please, please.
You know, I've lived this community a long time, and everybody will pitch anything. And you know why? It's all about money. It's all about money. Let's be honest. Let's not BS the public here. He wants to build two stories because he wants to make more money. Well, guess what? It's not compatible. It's not compatible. It doesn't work. You shouldn't do it. You've got a lot of residents. It's time to be a little more cautious. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, we've got Jennifer. Jennifer, is this an issue you'd like to speak on? Is that right?
This is the one. We just talked about Swan.
Why don't you come up? Yes, why don't you come up, Jennifer? And I just want to make sure this is the one that you want to comment on. And again, the three-minute, if you would...
I mostly wanted to comment on the Verdugo and Communaries.
Sorry, okay. Yeah, why don't you wait a little bit? And we'll get to that a little bit later. Okay. Barbara Williams. Barbara, did you want to comment on this one? Is that right? Okay. Okay. So, you know, Barbara, the three-minute rule, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let's go back to December 14, 2011. There's a man speeding down the freeway who felt he was cut off by a woman who entered going southbound from Carmen. Just before coming to the Pleasant Valley-Santa Rosa Road interchange, he decides to retaliate. He speeds over into the left lane and goes to try to cut her off. While he's doing that, he's flipping her off and looking back at her, doesn't realize that somebody is already in that middle lane. So, he jerks the wheel to the left, loses control, and starts heading to the center divider. So, as he comes to the center divider, he jerks it to the right. He comes over, and that car that was in the middle lane, his right front hits the left front of that vehicle. He's going so fast, he's half the weight of the car he is hitting, starts pushing it so that the wheels start scraping on the freeway. And then it uses that impact point as a fulcrum, and the vehicle flips end over end and comes to rest on the frontage road just on the other side of this interchange. The person in that vehicle thankfully died instantly. That person was my husband, the love of my life, the man I had been married to for 35 and a half years. And he died because a person was angry at another driver. This could easily happen in that area. Our accident investigator said of that interchange that the on-ramp there going southbound from the side that we're talking about here is too steep of a curve, and it meets with the on-ramp from the other side, and there's too much traffic there. So, he said, "It should not have been built that way, and in the future, it should be changed." So, I'm saying, do not allow this project to go through because that could happen to somebody else. And it doesn't matter how high that sound barrier is or what is there, but when a car is hit as fast as my husband was hit and it goes flying through the air, it's going to come to rest in the front yard or on top of that little boy riding on the bicycle on his trike. So, please, do not approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, on this particular issue, I don't have any more blue cards. Would anybody else like to talk? I have a young gentleman here. Come down and submit your card, please. Okay. Again, if you adhere to the three-minute rule, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, what we have here tonight is a personal problem, not a policy problem. 35 units seems to be more than enough for what this gentleman needs to develop his $600,000 houses. If you did not think ahead to ask what you could actually build on the property, that's not a policy problem. That's a personal problem. And we have vague threats of anecdotes from our city's employers, our city workers, that potentially, we might get sued or lose funding, but they can't cite one single example of it. So, we're just supposed to take you at your word? How about Gavin Newsom trucking some water after we build all these houses? Is there any water that's going to be allocated? We can't even get a desalter bill after 15 years, which our city staff underbid by about 50% or more. So, how are we supposed to feed these houses with additional water? They're going to have lawns. And then, not more than just a year ago, before two of you were replaced, there was a three-story overlooking a single-story residential street. And this council was like, "Oh, we don't know, weren't they supposed to put trees in?" It's like, how do you not know that? Are you not reading what you're approving? And then, here we are tonight. We're supposed to take you at your word again when you're going to have a two-story version, as if that's supposed to be better. And not to mention, going into the numerous health detriments of living next to a freeway. I lived there. My asthma got substantially worse. I am a smoker, but my asthma got triple, like, three times as bad. I'd use my inhaler daily when I lived in Lawndale, which is right off the 405 by LAX. Now, thankfully, I live on the west side of town away from the freeway, but these poor people are going to have kids that potentially will have their asthma exacerbated, not to mention cancer and other things from tailpipe emissions. There's supposedly this pipe dream that we're going to have electric cars going on in the future. That's less than 2% of sales right now, and I don't see that getting anywhere near 100% anytime, probably even in my lifetime, at the way it is going. So, I think tonight that I would like to ask you to disapprove of this plan because it just seems like a bad idea all over. And it just seems like, once again, this guy is saying he's going to do 38 units, but he's asking for double the allotment size. We all know it's going to happen. He's going to start whining that he can't make money, and then he's going to change and ask, "Oh, hey, can I build 70 units now?" It's like, no. Work within what's already in the general plan. If we can't make a general plan that's going to fit our housing needs, why do we even have a general plan? Thank you.
Sarah, could you give our name for the record if you... And I didn't get a blue card. I'm sorry.
Yes, it's Chris Eller.
Thank you very much. All right. So, is there anybody else? I don't have any more blue cards. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this issue? Okay. So, staff, do you have anything more that we need to discuss?
No, Mayor.
Do we want to... Ms. Craven, do you want to bring up the applicant anymore?
Well, I think the applicant had...
He had his time.
He had his time. Unless somebody has more questions of him.
Any more questions of the applicant?
Okay, I'll kick this off.
Ms. Craven?
As the slide, the last slide up there showed, we have exceeded arena numbers, well, almost in construction and certainly with zoning. And I don't see where there's anything really about this proposal that's different from most of the other houses, except that they're closer to the freeway. During the campaign this fall, I said I didn't see why we needed to add more housing for a while, and I don't see where this has changed, so I just can't support it.
Anyone else? Would you like to go?
Yeah, I'm just going to list a couple more of my concerns. I am concerned about the fact that people who have lived on a cul-de-sac and probably paid a little bit more to live on a cul-de-sac suddenly don't and live on a through-street. I'm concerned about the new homes being right up against the two-story, up against the one-story issue. I'm concerned about the added traffic and that there's really only two ways in and out of that neighborhood. As far as the arena numbers, you know, it might be different if we were talking about affordable housing, but it doesn't sound like that's what this is. And I didn't, just going back to the application, I just didn't get a good sense of why, and I'm still not really understanding why the change in the land use from low to low-medium density. So, that's where I am right now.
Okay. Mr. Mulchey?
Sure. I'm familiar with Woodside Greens. I spent the second half of my childhood growing up on Leatherwood, one block over from Milpus. So, I know Woodside Greens very, very well. My concerns are that this is not, as it's presented, it would not be compatible with the existing neighborhood. The idea of two-story structures kind of looming over, rather relatively close to a row of one story is not desirable. I don't think it's fair to the existing homeowners. I see the need for housing. I see the need for affordable housing, but I also see the need for quality housing. I want to make sure that if we do build, that it is quality housing. I do have concerns building next to the freeway. There are, obviously, the California State Air Quality Board came out several years ago, and that placing any housing within 500 feet of a freeway will have adverse health impacts to those residents. Tessa Robles, we had same issues. I wasn't on the council then, but, you know, they had to, I think, an extra pane to their windows. They had to put in special air filtration systems. I mean, it's known, you know, it's recognized that placing homes so close to a major freeway does present health risks. I do have concerns that this is not compatible with our current general plan. I don't feel comfortable changing it to low-medium density in that it allows that cap to go way up. As I said before, there's not much stopping changing this plan from 38 and it being allowed to grow even further because we've essentially gave this extra room to fill that. And I am concerned about how this may limit improvements to the freeway if we're adding additional lanes. We've talked about in the past, working with Caltrans to add lanes on both sides of the freeway between on-ramps and off-ramps to help congestion, and to what extent we can rework the southbound off-ramp there, which my personal opinion is it's a little too tight. So, I'm of the opinion, oh, you know what my opinion is.
Mr. Tremblay?
So, I, and I've said this before, generally, I support infill development, but it has to be smart infill development, and in my opinion, this is not smart infill development. With due respect to the applicant, it has a number of problems. First of all, the applicant is proposing to shoehorn 38 two-story homes into a relatively small space. And I agree with Mr. Mulchay when he described that impact as incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It just is. It's incompatible with that neighborhood. I'm concerned about, frankly, about the values of the properties in that area being impacted by having 38 two-story homes in such a close proximity. The comparison, when I read the staff report and I read the responses, and specifically and two-speaker, Ms. Santangelo and Ms. Kronk, I believe, have already talked about this, when the question was posed, "Describe why the amendment is warranted," the application was non-responsive, just pure and simple. And I thought it was rather conspicuous by its omission, that there was really not a statement, an affirmative statement of why it was warranted. The comparison to Tessa Robles, the comparison to that development, in my personal view, lacks merit on its face. That development was done prior to my time here, and I am not a fan of that development. And the principal reason I'm not a fan of that development, aside from the aesthetics -- I'm being tactful here -- is the concern regarding health impacts from an environmental standpoint. And I don't think it's a good idea to have, generally speaking, to have homes immediately adjacent to the freeway. I just don't. I think it's important, the reason I asked the question, I don't want anybody to misinterpret it, I think it's important for people to understand what the RHNA process is and what it is contextually, because it's something that we, as a council, have to pay attention to. It is what it is. I understand that. I also agree with some of the comments made earlier about whether or not, as in this current cycle, city has done a good job meeting its obligations. So, for all of those reasons, I just don't think this is smart infill development, so I can't support it.
So, I think what you heard, a lot of comments from applicants and staff and our council members here, too, but I think the one question is, is it the highest and best usage of this particular parcel? And what's left in our city is going to be very difficult to make, have any movement on. All the easy ones have been already dealt with for many, many years ago here. My concern with this, and it always has been, is a public safety issue vis-à-vis the 101 freeway here. If you'll notice, when you drive there, the topography, especially going southbound there, can be very, very challenging here, too. And the compatibility with the existing neighborhood. Now, the project that was approved across the street there was not a unanimous vote. However, there were several property owners there and individuals that actually supported that project. So, every project has its own nuance. It's all, they're all unique. They all have their positives and negatives with that. But if you look at this particular one here and the close proximity that this would be to an existing development here is very, very tight here. It's an extremely challenging piece of property here, and it's not necessarily contiguous to building a berm there. It'd be very difficult because of the topography there to really build the type of berm there. Air quality is important, you know? Asthma's on the rise in the country. We all know that. And I think that, you know, this has been dealt with and it will continue to be dealt with here, too. But at this particular situation that we find ourselves, and also the on- and off-ramp there definitely need to be enhanced before we really, you know, talk about a situation that we have right here. And the close proximity to the existing neighborhood and the impacts of this potentially are somewhat significant here. So, those are my concerns, and I'm going to go along with my colleagues as well.
Mr. Mayor, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
All right. I would move that the city council deny GPA referral request number one.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, please vote. That is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need to re-vote, Ms. Santangelo? Could we re-vote, please?
We all need to re-vote.
Ready to do it again? Okay, that is a 5-0 on denial of request number one. So, that gets us down to request number two, and that's Mr. Getch. Again, do we have... Okay, we do have the individual here, the applicant, Mr. Bob Getch.
Yes, and we have a presentation from the applicant.
Okay. And if you could move the microphone as close as you can as well.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Watch out, I'll start talking. I won't stop. Sorry to... Can you hear that all right? Hopefully, not to bore you, another PowerPoint presentation. My partner and I, 20 years ago, purchased the last remaining property owned by the heirs of Adolfo Camarillo. And the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what we did with that property. That property was, we called it the Camarillo Ranch Business Park. Is there a way to... Oh, is this the... Okay, see. I don't know how this stuff works. Which way do you make it go forward? Like, that way? Okay. So, this kind of talks a little bit about that. That's not that exciting. So, as part of the project, we donated the Camarillo house to the city of Camarillo, and given the costs of renovation, we were happy to do it. But we also dragged the barn, as you see here, and the stables from over near Cuyahoga Creek over to where they are now. And I just discovered a video I made in 1999 showing that movement, and I had John Frazier, Economic Development Director, pass it on to the foundation... economic development director, pass it on to the foundation, the Camarillo Ranch. So, anyway, we developed over five years, again, in partnership with the city of Camarillo, a business park, including people like Pacific Sales, Advanced Motion Controls, Megaware. This shows the layout of the property. We built, between ourselves and people we sold land to, approximately 875,000 square feet of space. And we think it turned out well. I think the Camarillo house and the surrounding activities turned out well for the city. Unfortunately, we don't have an old house to give you at the, this new project, but our intent is basically the same thing. As it was mentioned by the planning director, some years ago, the former owner of the property had some conversations with a large retail user and rezoned the property from light industrial to a mixture of commercial-industrial. As you all know, if you buy things on Amazon, retailing has changed tremendously. It's a different world than it was, you know, even a few years ago. Our intent is basically to turn this back into what it was originally, which is a business park. We have a variety of zoning categories here to kind of reflect, in some respects, people we already have that are interested in it. Given the limited amount of light industrial in our R&amp;D land in Camarillo, we think this makes sense for the city. The projects, the buildings we're going to build likely will be owned by the companies that occupy them and will be in Camarillo for a long time. So, and we're going to subdivide the property so each, each building can be owned by the occupant. As this states, we have a little bit of commercial, service commercial involved and some other But the bottom line, we think this is a good thing for the city of Camarillo. We're going to bring in some good jobs. We just started grading today on a site right next to this, where we're building on spec a 55,000-square-foot industrial building. We've got a lot of interest so far. And, anyway, we think it's something that's good for the city.
Okay, are there any questions? Mr. Tremblay has a question, please.
Sure.
Mr. Getch, some of the things we've been talking about up here over the course of my short two years on the council is the, is the concern on the remaining amount of industrial.
Right.
Industrial zone space in Camarillo. Can you give, from your perspective, what you see as the current market conditions? Because obviously, I'm inferring that those market conditions are a catalyst for this referral request.
Yes.
Can you sort of, give us an idea from Camarillo's standpoint, where we are on industrial space? And what I'd like you to do, because I believe in asking compound questions, sorry, is I'd like you to differentiate between the smaller versus larger industrial units.
Absolutely. First of all, let me state, my partner and I, between 1999 and 2004, built approximately a million and a half square feet of industrial buildings, primarily in the size range of 30,000 to 60,000 square feet. Virtually all of them were pre-sold. Now, currently in Camarillo, there's a few large distribution buildings that have come on the market, and those of you who've been around for a while know that, you know, originally one was occupied by Playtex, and then Technicolor, and then Deckers, and they kind of come and go. You know, we do not compete with those people. I mean, those are warehouses, and the employees get warehouse wages. I'm pretty sure if you did an inventory of employees at Advanced Motion Control, Parker Hanifin, Johansson Technologies, you know, the figures are, the salaries are probably six figures. So while there is a vacancy in one segment, primarily the very large segment, in the area that we build in, there's very little vacancy. In fact, to the best of my knowledge, nobody has built buildings like we're proposing since we did them 14 years ago. So we think we've got a good niche in the market, and...
Can you describe that square footage threshold?
Sure, it's basically 30,000 to 60,000 square feet. If you go back to the 80s, there were a lot of buildings built around the 20,000-square-foot range. Smaller than that, a lot of developers are a little reluctant to build in the bigger size range. We aren't, because we had very good experience between 1999 and 2004. And, again, with, as Paul Ferry, my broker with CBRE, will attest, we've also, already got a lot of interest in the property.
Can you just, can you describe generally what sectors you think are more interested in that, sounds like, that 30,000 to 60,000-foot space?
Mm-hmm.
Because you've got, I mean, this is varied, because you've got some research, some R&amp;D, and you've got M1 and M2.
Right.
But with regard to the, with regard to that sizing of units specifically, in your experience, what sectors are more inclined to take up that kind of space?
I think primarily, you know, if you go, if you walk through Pacific, or the Camarillo Ranch that we did, Parker Hanifin, they are an aerospace company, they made quick disconnect devices for fighter planes and F1 racing cars. Advanced Motion Controls across the street, they build servo motors that interface between computers and manufacturing. Down the street, Johansson Technology, frankly, Paul, I've forgotten what, what they do. Been a while. But anyway, they're primarily high-tech, they make stuff. That's the bottom line, you know? They don't just warehouse things, they make things. And we expect more of that. The one, the reason we have the one lot zoned M2 is there is a equipment distributor who is interested in moving from another city to Camarillo. They also retail, and they generate a lot of sales tax dollars. So that's kind of the reason for that. Also, it gives us a little flexibility. But I think if you look at Camarillo Ranch, you look at the architecture there, that's what we're going to do. We don't do things cheaply. You know, I want to bring my kids back in 20 years, and I've already done it, and have them look at it, and then be proud that, you know, their dad built this stuff. If, I mean, and one of the reasons I'm in this business is I like to see things built and that will stand there for years and years. So, that's why I got in the business.
Any other questions? Yeah, so, would this be job enhancement, would you say, as well?
Absolutely. I mean, retail, retail's good, and there's 50 acres of it across the street from us. And, you know, retail's good because it brings in sales tax dollars, but I think part also what we want to do here is bring in good-paying jobs. I mean, Camarillo is a great town, and we're, we're excited to have just started the building next door, and we're excited to move forward with this project. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, staff, do you have anything else that you need to add on this, or?
No, we don't.
You don't? Okay, okay. So you've heard the testimony here, who would like to start this?
We have anybody else who wants to talk on it?
I do not have anybody else that I'm aware of here.
It's the guy with us.
Oh, let's have him come up here.
Chris.
Chris, if you'd submit that, Luke, thank you.
You're going to probably be hearing from me a few times tonight, so I apologize if I didn't submit my cards in advance. But anyways, my concern is, I believe this, the request originally was from 2016 for regional, if I remember and heard correctly, for commercial, a regional commercial attractive, or anchor store, basically. My concern is, I think last year, my first time I ever actually spoke here, there is an extension to that, and now he's asking to change his zoning just to 100% industrial. So if he wasn't so sure, I mean, if he was so sure in 2016, but then he couldn't get anything, so he asked for more time, and then now he's really sure about industrial. I just think we should be a little cautious about this, even though it sounds good, good jobs is great. I mean, I agree with everything he said, we need more good jobs in this town. I agree 100%. And I'm not trying to come out like aggressively against this, but it seems like there's a lot of changing of his mind, a request for more time, and there's nothing come back. Like, why, why is it suddenly now, oh, I want to do industrial? I'm just kind of, my question's mainly against that.
Can I, can I get that?
I think we can answer that.
I think we can answer that.
We can answer that when we get to speaking.
So, sorry. So that's my question, I'm not trying to be antagonistic to him, I'm just, I want the best for this town, and there's not a lot of land left, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the council's kind of giving it its appropriate due. That's, that's all I have on this one, sorry.
Would staff like to address that question now?
I want them to sit down so we can hear the answer. The answer is that Mr. Getch is not the same developer as the one who made the original proposal that was extended. That developer actually died, and he passed away. It was very unfortunate. But Mr. Getch has entered into an arrangement with the bank that took that property into receivership, and he is proposing a new development.
Okay. I don't have any more blue cards on this one, anybody else? I have two, a young lady, is she coming up here? Nope?
No, she's coming back from...
All right. So with that, council discussion, Ms. Craven?
When I first talked to this major resale developer, and as we ensued with discussions afterwards, I never really thought that was the thing for Camarillo, and it's probably because I'm the only person who was on the council who didn't go around looking at major retail developers. I had other things to do. And, major destination retail developer, excuse me. I always thought that that project would, I mean, the thing we hear about most, or for a long time, we heard about most, until Matt moved to Texas and keeps coming back every other Wednesday night, is that we have the Camarillo, the clogged Camarillo freeways. And if you think they're crowded now, that's nothing compared to what they would have been if this major destination retailer came, and if they had as much out-of-town traffic coming, because they wouldn't come for what Camarillo was going to buy from them. So if all those people from San Luis Obispo to Halfway to Ontario came, we would have freeways that were much more clogged, and that was always my concern. So, understanding that that agreement is still there and that we're going to have to terminate that agreement makes me think this is a good project. I also am happy to send it back to being a business park, so this one I can support.
What else? Mr. Tremblay, would you like to?
Can I go to the runner?
Okay. Do you want to do it, Mr. Mulchay?
Sure, I'll be, I'll be short, I'll be quick. As someone, I can, I can support the referral of this general plan amendment. I think it is moving in the right direction. I think Mrs. Craven said, said most of what I was going to say. I think this is more in line with what we hope to achieve with our recently, our recent economic development report. I think this would bring more high-paying jobs to a city that is right now kind of overly reliant on low-paying retail jobs. And I would hope, to the extent that we can create more jobs in Camarillo, and hope that our residents don't need to travel 40 minutes outside the city, as most people have to do, in order to go to work, which only leads to more congestion on that freeway. So, I think this'd be, I think this is a great move in the right direction.
Mr. Tremblay?
Well, Mr. Mulchay took the words right out of my mouth. This is... No, no, you did a good job. I mean, from an economic development standpoint, this makes sense, the referral makes sense, given changing market conditions. And I think the de-emphasis on the, on commercial development and the need, the need for additional industrial development space, and that, and I include by that, by that R&amp;D, M1 and M2, like, I'm not differentiating between those. On the smaller unit size, to me, makes some sense, and it's part of this city's, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's an inherent part of the city's economic development strategy. So I'm supportive of the referral.
I echo what has already been said. It's important to me that there are not just jobs, but jobs that enable us to live in this town that we work in. If we're talking about traffic and all of the other things that more people add to, if we're not having to get on that freeway to drive outside for a job, then that also helps decrease traffic. But I want Camarillo to be a city that we can both live and work in, so I can support this.
Okay. Well, for an individual that lives, eats and drinks retail, I can definitely attest that there's been a dramatic, dramatic change in retail. The first request, the individual did the best he could, it was always a long shot, and it didn't happen for various reasons. However, this new proposal, if we can get a centilla of jobs in the city, and they may not have to get on the freeways to drive there, wouldn't that be a good thing? What a concept, huh? So this is, the individual's known to build high-quality, and I think it'd be good for the economy of Camarillo, and I always look for the highest and best relative use of a property, and I think this is probably about as good as we're going to get. So with that, I can support it as well. So I'll ask the council to make a motion.
I'll move that the council approve GPA referral request number two, Getch.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, and for the discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That one passes 5-0. Okay, that's going to get us down to the status update, Camino Ruiz. I do have a blue card from a Mr. Hargrave, he just says he doesn't need to speak, just available for any questions. I don't believe that any council members have any questions on this.
Actually, I...
Oh, you do, I'm sorry, Mr. Tremblay does have a question, so...
Question, I think, is to Mr. Vaca. I was a little confused, Mr. Vaca, on the discussion on Camino Ruiz and the staff report. I got somewhat of an inference on this, on big page two of our staff report, where the discussion is with respect to Camino Ruiz. There is, in the final paragraph, and I'm going to quote, "Staff and the applicant are working on refining the project plan concepts and project description, including traffic study analysis to a sufficient level that the city can scope the necessary SEQA document." You know, so in other words, do the scoping. Does there exist any disagreement between the developer and the staff right now on A, the project description, and B, the traffic study analysis?
No, there's not necessarily disagreement, we're just working on, we're actually working on the scope of the contract with our consultant, and then we anticipate moving forward. We've been working together, the applicant's been refining the site plan, and the number of units has come down from the original referral amount of 420 to 386. And so as that has been refined, we're just fine-tuning the project description so that once we kick off the environmental analysis, we have everything correct in the scope for the consultant.
Okay, that's my one question.
Anybody else have any questions on this? Okay, I do believe the blue card for Jennifer Dearden, a third time's the charm, right, Jennifer? Can we? Right, I believe this is the time, yes.
Thanks for your patience.
Again, if you could adhere to the three minutes, Jennifer, I appreciate it, thank you. And put the microphone real close to you, if you would. Thank you.
There we go. Good evening, thank you for, again, the third time. My trip up here is mostly just as a little note of concern I have. It was already mentioned tonight about our little pockets of building and all that kind of thing. So that is my address tonight. I just ask us that we pay real close attention to these little pockets of building, and most of the reason why is because the effect it has on the quality of life of all the people that are coming into Camarillo and moving into these little pockets environments. I worry that the quality of life for them isn't going to be the same as the people that are here already living. I'm not opposed to the building, I understand it has to happen, but I just think we have to be really wise in choosing how we're going to do it. So the apartments that are going in on Verdugo over Camino Ruiz, again, it was already even discussed earlier tonight that we're worried about the asthma, we're worried about building closer to the freeway. Well, those apartments, 386 of them, are on the freeway, just as those other houses were going to be, you know, which got voted out. So, again, just to address, to make sure that we're just doing apples-to-apples here, we need to make sure that everybody's taken care of, as well as all the 386 families that are going to be in those apartments. That's a lot of people. I'm concerned with that area because surrounding all of those apartments are all industrial buildings. There's not even sidewalks on that street. I don't, do you guys know that there's no sidewalks on that street? I don't know, the kids needing to get to Cam High, the kids needing to get to the bus and things like that. I worry about these little pocket parks that the, that the one contractor was talking about, because pocket parks are about as big as this area right here and they have a place structure in the middle. That might be good for the zero-to-five-year-olds, but what about all the, you know, pre-teens, all the middle schoolers? Where are all those kids going to ride their bikes? I'd like to see a park and I just wonder if all these little pocket buildings, these little, all these little differentiated little spots of building, I worry that, you know, with the big developments, they have to donate space maybe for a park. These little builders and these little groups of houses, you know, where's the park for these 486 people, 386, sorry, people moving in? You know, I still sort of fantasize about a park at the bottom of the grade where all that industrial is, or was, or it's all zoned for, where the Cavalier was. I just still think what a beautiful entrance to, you know, gateway to our community that would be. I know zoning can get changed, because it gets changed here every time I'm at a meeting, so I know that can happen. So, that's just what I wanted to say. Everybody, just to take real good care of all the new people coming in, make sure we have quality of life for our town and keep our beautiful town, you know, homey as it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Jennifer, you need to come more often, because we only change the zones and general plans once or twice a year.
Okay, so next, we're going to get down to comments on the status update of the New Urban West. I have, I have several cards here, so I'll call you up and take your, your comments here on that, as I receive. And the first is Jonathan Frankel. Is Jonathan here? Ron Kester, is Ron here? Oh, you, Jonathan? Okay, come right up, Jonathan, welcome. And again, three minutes, if you would, appreciate it.
Yes, thanks very much, Mayor Kilde and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Jonathan Frankel. I am the Director of Forward Planning on New Urban West and it has been my great privilege to manage this project at Camarillo Springs since the referral in 2017. This past year, we've made amazing progress addressing one obviously extremely critical issue, which is drainage and flooding at Camarillo Springs. Many of you are aware that over 150 homes currently sit in a mapped FEMA floodplain and this is an issue we really want to actively address as we move forward with the design of our project. And our goal has been simple and that is to remove all existing residents from the mapped FEMA floodplain, ensuring flood safety and minimizing flooding risk for those existing residents, while of course also facilitating the approved general plan amendment referral. We're also really pleased over the course of this year to continue robust community outreach with many of the, of the folks you're going to hear from this evening and we've met with them on a continuous basis to solicit their feedback about really what do they value about their community and what really matters and how do we design a project that really results in a win-win and substantial community benefits. So, we are really looking forward to the, beginning the environmental review with staff and working through all of the environmental issues and we appreciate this opportunity to address you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Ron Kester. Is Ron here tonight? There he is. Again, if you'd adhere to the three minutes, appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Kester. I'm a resident of Camarillo Springs and, first of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't, when I, every time I take this stand, just to thank the council members and city staff for their support of the Camarillo Springs, residents in the Camarillo Springs community during the floods and the debris flows and all the work that you've done there. You have been amazing. It makes you proud to be a member of this community and we appreciate it very much. Even to the point of, some of Dave's people were out there, Noah and the other engineers stamping up to the, in the mountain, in the mud, to check things out. We had the Camarillo police out checking on it, we had the fire department out checking on it and the Office of Emergency Services. So, I'm taking some of my, my time to thank you. I appreciate it very much. We appreciate your support. Now, to the New Urban West. I am the unofficial chairman of the unofficial advisory committee. We are not elected. We actually predated New Urban West when we heard that, just a brief comment, when we heard that the golf course had been sold and we researched and found out who it had been sold to, we decided that we needed to get proactive to keep what had happened in some of that person's other developments from happening in Camarillo Springs. His name was Mr. Ron Richards, okay? We needed to insulate ourselves from Ron Richards and, and what we did is we actually proactively supported New Urban West and brought, brought them in, discussed with them and liked how their community-based development worked and their understanding and their experience. And so, we, we actually predate the developer, if you will. We're trying to be very community-based. Our advisory and communication, we advise New Urban West as much as possible, based upon community input. We basically have had 19 community meetings, five newsletters and six technical workshops over the past year, year and a half, getting, giving information to the community and getting information back that we can pass through New Urban West. We talked about the subcommittees that were moving forward. I'm going to be on the open space subcommittee. We're, we're looking at that 20 acres buffer zone, we're looking at how we maintain it as an informal wildlife corridor and yet open it up to recreational activities for our residents and hiking trails and such. We're very satisfied with what New Urban West has done. They have kept their commitments. The golf course is open, it is playable, it's maintained, it's beautiful. And that was one of the major commitments that we wanted on them. They have kept every commitment and proved themselves to be good, community-minded developers and we look forward into moving to the EIS stage of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next is, I believe, is John Gardner, John G., John, okay. Sorry about the last name, John.
That's my wife.
Okay.
And that's my wife laughing.
Again, three minutes.
Hi, I'm John Gardner. We live on the golf course in Camarillo Springs. We love it there. We lived in Agoura and this is significantly better. So, I'll just echo maybe some of Ron's comments. We are appreciative of what you guys have done for us in terms of overall support of our community. A couple of things, the initial hydrology studies, we had extensive reporting to us as part of the process and it was very encouraging to be able to eliminate a number, I think it's 150 homes, maybe from the floodplain. That represents real dollars to people, a lot of retired people, maybe fixed-income people. We calculated, just broad calculations, perhaps as much as $300,000 a year that would not have to be paid by our homeowners if those homes could be removed from the floodplain. So, we think that's significant, not just the financial impact, but the emotional impact of debris flow and flooding. As a matter of fact, it's been five years since the, the mud flows and it's five years and finally, the last house now is ready to be sold. So, it's a devastating impact. The other thing that I'd like to comment on is New Urban West, I think there's some perhaps misinformation that they've got some secret company with Ron Richards. We don't believe that's true. As a matter of fact, Lucy and I haven't been in the community that long, we've been here six years, but I understand New Urban West has extensive long-term relationships with respected people in our community. So, I personally, as a businessperson, have been very appreciative and pleased with their responsiveness to us, their consideration to us and their cooperation with us. So, I appreciate your support and urge you to continue to allow the process to continue. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Next is Richard Wagner. Again, the three minutes, Richard, if you would, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Rich Wagner. I live at Camarillo Springs on Tosamar, Paseo Tosamar. I'm the unofficial co-chairman of the golf area committee, along with another gentleman, Greg Sayers. We're looking to enhance the property. The property as it sits now has been abused for decades, in my mind. I'm a golfer. I've been in golf course business, building golf courses, maintaining golf courses for 50 years. I built Sherwood Country Club. I know what quality looks like and we want to enhance the experience at Cam Springs. I think we've got the partnership to deal with, with New Urban West. When I think of the experience, I helped put together the property at Lanai with Mr. Murdoch. They have a property there called The Experience at Meneli and that is what we want to recreate with a better clubhouse facility, an improved golf course and the whole experience of learning center. So, I hope that you continue supporting us and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Chantal Limone. Is Chantal here? There she is. Again, the three minutes, if you would, Chantal. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chantal Limone and I'm a homeowner and a resident in Camarillo Springs. Camarillo Springs is a community made up of all ages. A portion is age-restricted to 55 and older, while another portion is home to children, families, adults, seniors and people of all ages and that's where I live. I am optimistic about the possibility of the golf course being redeveloped, as I feel it would enhance the lifestyle and amenities in our community and in our city. I first learned about the opportunity to be involved in our neighborhood advisory committee back in 2017. Since then, I've participated in regular meetings and I am delighted to lead one of our subcommittees, which is gathering input from residents about a remodeled clubhouse and restaurant. We are asking for dining and entertainment preferences, everything from ambiance and social activities to food and beverage ideas. I have worked in residential real estate in Camarillo for the past 10 years and I also hold a residential real estate broker's license. I believe that this project is being designed in a way that would support existing property values rather than diminish them. As a lifelong resident of Camarillo, I am passionate about our community and it gives me great joy to be here tonight with so many friends who share that passion. We also share many of the same concerns and with the city council's support in allowing our efforts to proceed, we will arrive at answers to many questions. I look forward to working together to continue our progress and thank you for hearing from us tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Bob Spielman. Is Bob here tonight? I know, yeah. Jeffrey does it.
Why don't you name the next one and then they can be quicker?
Okay. And after that will be Brian Morris, so if you can be on deck there.
Mayor, council members and staff, I'm Bob Spielman. I live at 57 Margarita. I'm one of the 150 homes that are in the floodplain. I would appreciate being out of the floodplain. I recently put a new home in there and had to raise it quite high, just to be out of the floodplain to meet the city's requirements. That comes at a substantial cost to anybody that does that. So, by them doing this and helping us get out of the floodplain, it's going to help many seniors to be able to afford to put in a new home in our community that's quite aging and improve our community while making it easier to get in and out of their homes. Running upstairs when you get older is not easy. There's many people in the room here that probably oppose this, say, they, a lot of stories going around about Mr. Richards and everybody else, but the reason I got involved in this was one reason. I look directly at the golf course every day. I want to make sure what I look at and what I see in my retirement is something that I can live with. So, working with New Urban West and these committees, they've been nothing but gracious. They've been very good to us, they've worked with us, they've taken every one of our ideas and they've incorporated in their plan and I feel that's a very admirable thing to do. So, whether it works out or not, we don't know at this point, but we do support moving forward, hopefully to get all the answers we need so that our golf course doesn't change and our way of life stays nice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Brian Morris and Dr. Terry Denson's on deck. So, Brian?
Good evening, honorable council. My name is Brian Morris. I live in Camarillo Springs. I would like to congratulate council member Santangelo and council member Mulshea on their election victories and council member Craven on her reelection. I founded our group in opposition Camarillo Springs building after attending the September 27, 2017 city council meeting. Our group was not associated, excuse me, let me repeat, our group is not associated with, nor do we receive funding from any business. We're not selling anything to anyone and we're not expecting anything in return for our efforts, except a decision by our Camarillo City Council to deny the request for rezone of the Camarillo Springs Golf Course acreage. We do not want 300 new homes in Camarillo Springs. The golf course is the largest recreational space in Camarillo. With all the building underway and still planned for this city, we need parks and recreation. Two, let's look at all, excuse me, let's look at a long view for Camarillo and not just one parcel at a time. More opposition presentations will follow me by our team members who will explore serious concerns we have about the New Urban West plan, but we wish to save all 18 holes of our golf course. We record our members' reasons by joining the team. For many, it's the traffic being generated by new homes and businesses. Others feel the owner of the golf course and developer are less than truthful. Some are very concerned about our ability to evacuate quickly. Keeping the golf course is important to many, but just as important are open spaces and protecting our abundant wildlife. However, for most, Camarillo is beginning to feel like the San Fernando Valley and they're worried that our government is blind to their concerns. Flooding and our springs are a very important concern. Devastating floods have covered Camarillo Springs on the average of every 10 years. Computer models do not trump history. In 1969, we received 45 inches of rain in 30 days. In 1998, we received 40 inches of rain in only 28 days. We know what happened in 2014. We have photos of 20th century floods that will shock you. They're available. The developer has added a new carrot dangling from his string by suggesting no flood insurance requirement for the manufactured homes. Not too fast, Santa Claus. The flood control plan has not been approved. FEMA decides where flood insurance is required. The insurance company decides who and for how long the coverage is required. One last thing, if I have a little minute, I don't know about all these meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Dr. Terry Denson, followed by Barb Williams, followed by Drew Thompson. So, Dr. Terry Denson, thank you very much.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Dr. Terry Denson. I taught kindergarten at El Descanso School back in 1970 and I've lived in Camarillo Springs since 91. Our city has experienced the challenges and rewards of growth and prosperity. The 101 isn't two lanes anymore and there's a Springville interchange, but we still sit in stop-and-go traffic. Within the next year, there will be almost 1,400 new homes in Camarillo and an additional estimated 11,000 daily one-way trips on the 101. Tonight, there's a plan to add 300 more homes in Camarillo Springs and at least 600 vehicles and another 2,400 trips. The developer's well-financed PR campaign with free t-shirts, free buffets, bus rides and all that kind of stuff are designed to buy our support for their promises of flood control and a glorious new golf course. But behind it is the property owner's threat to let me build all those homes or I'll shut it down and let it rot. No wonder some residents are intimidated. As they say in ranch country, this fancy plan is all hat and no cattle. You're too smart and you care too much about Camarillo to support a plan backed up with threats. It's not what's best for the current and future residents of Camarillo. We don't have Springville to handle a 30% increase of traffic in Camarillo. We don't have Springville to handle a 30% increase of traffic in Camerio Springs. We have an underpass and a freeway ramp from the 70s with one lane in and one lane out. Getting on the 101 now at Cam Springs is a test of courage and quick reflexes. Accommodating the extra traffic from at least 600 more residential vehicles, not to mention the crowds going to the new golf course with our existing infrastructure is not going to be an easy fix. November 8, 2018 saw the first test of a disaster response plan the city worked with authorities to formulate for the businesses in six existing Camerio Springs communities after the 2013 Springs Fire. Even with police help during daylight hours, it took some residents over two hours to evacuate as fire was burning down to property lines and roads were clogged with emergency responders coming in to protect homes and businesses. We know the city's disaster plan will be tested again. A 30% increase in residential traffic will have a dramatic impact on the ability of first responders to preserve lives and property. This flashy redevelopment plan adds 300 homes and holds the golf course hostage. It's not what's best for the long-term future of Camerio. The best plan will not come with threats. Don't be bullied. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.